Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Genevieve Wooten.
Present.
We have a quorum.
George Pond and Kristy Davis have excused themselves.
George Pond and Kristy Davis will not be with us tonight, yes.
Correct.
Thank you. We still have a quorum. Normally I do an approval of the council study notes, council notes which are, right now are the council study notes of June 5. I discovered there may have been something that's not quite accurate and we've had a discussion but haven't got it cleared up yet, so we're going to hold the actual approval of those to the following meeting. And that we, the clerk and I have discussed it. We have a deputy clerk tonight because our clerk will be sort of training our deputy clerk for temporary usage. I don't believe we have any proclamation in our ceremonies tonight, so we can move right into the program, which is, starts with citizens' right to speak. And there's no one on this particular item which is items that are not on the agenda. Any changes in tonight's agenda? Saying done, we'll go forward, starting with the consent agenda. Genevee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are two items tonight. The first is Resolution Number 24-2017, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Wheatridge and the Wheatridge Historical Society. That was Item 1A. And Item 1B is Resolution Number 23-2017, a resolution approving the 2017 Police Recruit Training Agreement and issuing a $36,000 payment to the Lakewood Police Department to provide law enforcement academy training for six Wheatridge Police Recruits at the Combined Regional Academy.
A motion is in order.
Okay. I move to approve Resolution Number 24-2017, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Wheatridge and the Wheatridge Historical Society. And... I move to approve Resolution Number 23-2017, a resolution approving the 2017 Police Recruit Training Agreement and issuing a payment of $36,000 to the Lakewood Police Department to provide law enforcement academy training for six Wheatridge Police Recruits at the Combined Regional Academy.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Seconded by, what is it? Ms. Hoppe. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. We're gonna move right into Item Number Two. Mr. Fitzgerald, if you will read that, and I believe there's probably a large sign-up sheet to the rear.
Okay, this is a public hearing and a resolution. This is Resolution 22-2017, a resolution approving a seven-lot subdivision plat for property zoned residential 1, R1, at 11435 West 32nd Avenue, case number WS1602, Merkwood Estates. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a seven-lot subdivision plat for property zoned residential R1 at 11435 West 32nd Avenue. The purpose of this subdivision is to split the development parcel in accordance with the R1 Zone District Regulations to create seven new single-family sites. Prior action, the Planning Commission reviewed this request at a public hearing on June 1, 2017, and gave a recommendation of denial for the following reason: The proposed street system and drainage design do not provide a logical development pattern for the new parcels.
Thank you. This is a open hearing, which I've just opened, and I want to swear in anyone who will be speaking on this issue, that would include everybody who has signed up as well as staff, please stand and raise your right hand if you're going to speak, as well as the applicant if available. Thank you. Do you swear to tell the whole truth, as you know it to be and understand it to be? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you. You may sit down.
Prior to beginning my presentation, I do have some additional handouts that I'd like to distribute for council. The first one is an email that was, it's a duplication of what was included in your packet from Bruce Croll, who's the chief of the West Metro. There was one typo in the other one where he referenced Colfax and it should have been 32nd Avenue. So I'd like to enter that into the record. That's one thing. And then the second thing I have is a letter from Lori Michael Strand, who live in Quail Hollow. Let's see if I can bring their address. And then the final thing is a group of letters which were distributed to council via email earlier today, and so this is just a hard copy of the letters that I want to enter into the record. And they've already received copies of those. So, for the record, I'm Meredith Record, and I'm here to present case number WS16-02, which is a request for approval of a seven-lot subdivision plat at 11435 West 32nd Avenue. And the property is zoned R1. I'd like to enter into the record, in addition to the things I just entered, the case file and packet materials, the subdivision regulations, and the contents of this digital presentation. Also, all notification and posting requirements have been met, therefore City Council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. Once again, the application for being requested is for approval of a seven-lot subdivision on property zoned R1 to accommodate seven new single-family homes at 11435 West 32nd Avenue. So this is a 2016 aerial of the property. North is to the top. 32nd Avenue runs on the southern side of the site, and you can see it outlined in red. The subject property is comprised of two parcels. One parcel sits, has frontage on West 32nd Avenue and has a single-family home on it and is just over an acre in size. A larger parcel, which is vacant, is 3.77 acres in size, and it is essentially north of the parcel, right on 32nd Avenue. There is a strip of land which extends south to 32nd Avenue which does provide access to the site. This parcel is vacant, was most recently used for agrarian activities, and the Lena Gulch 100-year floodplain does encumber the north, I'd say about one-third of the site. The combined area of the two lots is 4.9 acres. This is the same 2016 aerial, except with the zoning overlay, and the yellow color that you're seeing on the overhead represents R1 zoning. R1 zoning is the city's largest lot, single-family zone, with 12,500 square feet of lot size with 100 feet of lot width. And as you can see from the aerial, once again, property is outlined in red, and that there essentially are single-family homes to the west, developed as Applewood Brookside, which was platted in 1983, and the Primus subdivision, platted in 2011. To the east is the Applewood Baptist Church parking lot on the southern end. To the north is the Quail Hollow subdivision, which was platted in 2014. I would note that there is a drainage way that runs directly adjacent to the property, which is on the Applewood Village, excuse me, the Applewood Baptist parcel, and it is about 10 feet lower than the surface of the parking lot. Let's take a look at some slides. So, this first slide is looking west along 32nd Avenue. The entrance to the property is sort of in this location. What you're seeing with the hand railing and the gutter is the overflow that comes across 32nd Avenue from the drainage basin to the southwest. So this is looking straight on across 32nd Avenue to the north. Again, you can see, sort of in the middle of the image, again, this drainage overflow that happens. And then, just to the left of that is the existing house on the smaller piece of property. Still standing on 32nd Avenue, again, there's the house. This image was taken looking into the entrance to the Applewood Brookside subdivision, that would be Route Street. And now I'm standing down at the end of the cul-de-sac bulb on Route Street, looking east towards Quail Hollow. So what you're seeing is the unbuilt right-of-way at this location. This is the property being subdivided, and the homes in the back are the Quail Hollow homes. Now I was standing on 33rd in the Quail Hollow subdivision, looking to the southwest, and you can see the rear of that existing house on the property. Looking again, west, these are the homes in Applewood Brookside. And then this is looking northwest towards, sort of the Lena Gulch area, some of that property is encumbered with floodplain, and then some of the houses in the background. So the subdivision we're looking at tonight is two pages. Sheet one is the declaration page, and this contains the legal description, required signature blocks for property owners, recording information, and notes. The notes include language that the city requires regarding easements and detention upon maintenance, and there's also a note regarding maintenance of common elements in the subdivision that the homeowners association would be responsible for. The second sheet, it shows the layout of the subdivision. North, this time, is on the left-hand side of the page. 32nd Avenue is at this location. Here's the Applewood Brookside subdivision, and this is Quail Hollow over here. So, again, the plat will subdivide the property into seven new lots to be developed with single-family homes. All of those lots do meter exceed the minimum requirements for the R1 Zone District. A street connection for West 33rd Avenue runs across the middle and essentially connects the Applewood Brookside subdivision with the Quail Hollow subdivision on either side. A new street comes off that 33rd Avenue called Robb Street, and I would point out that there is no vehicular connection to Robb at West 30, from Robb to West 32nd Avenue, except for a pedestrian access. Both Robb Street and 33rd will be full with dedicated local streets with public improvements installed. Lots 1 through 6, which are in this location right here, will gain access from Robb. Lot 7, which is north of 33rd Avenue, gains access from 33rd. And again, I would point out that on Lot 7, it is encumbered with 100-year floodplain, and that is an area which cannot be built on. There are easements shown on the plat. There's a pedestrian access to 32nd. There's also an emergency access turnaround provided between lots 1 and 2. Drainage and utilities easements are provided along the east and west property lines of Lot 7. We've got a sanitary sewer easement which runs along the rear portion of Lot 7, and tract A, which is located right here, whoops, let me go back, sorry, at this location, which will serve as a stormwater quality pond. So, Applewood Brookside was platted in 1983, and as you can see, it has, again, 32nd Avenue down here. Route Street extends to the north and ends in a cul-de-sac bulb. However, there was this piece of right-of-way that was dedicated but never built, with the intent that at some point this would enable the opportunity to get some better circulation area and perhaps connect with the property directly to the east. This is a copy of an exhibit that was included in that case file from 1983. I think I might have even made this using Zipitone, so that's how long ago this was. 32nd Avenue is down here. This would be the Applewood Brookside subdivision with Route Street, showing a tentative location for Robb with a 33rd Avenue extension from Route over to Quail. Now, there were some other connections that were shown on this exhibit as well, which included Route Street extending north up to 38th Avenue with, of course, that would take a couple of bridge crossings of Lena Gulch, and then also 35th Avenue extended between, I guess that Sims, and hopefully Quail on the other end. Now, a lot of this hasn't been, come to fruition, but this was included in the packet with discussion about future connections in the area. So, more recently, and this is a copy of the Quail Hollow subdivision, and north is to the left-hand side up here. 33rd Avenue comes in from Quail Street and it goes into a cul-de-sac called Quail Court. 33rd Avenue continues west to hit that western boundary line. So the right-of-way was dedicated and the street improvements were constructed to facilitate extension of 33rd, with the idea that if something develops on this western side, this cul-de-sac could be eliminated with these pieces vacated back to those property owners and 33rd Avenue continuing west to make that connection. So, in regard to this issue of circulation, again, staff feels it's been on the city's radar screen for almost 30 years. We feel that providing this connection, which, again, looking at this aerial photo, here's the subject parcel, here's Applewood Brookside that comes up, and Quail Hollow, and so obviously you can make that visual connection, that we think that it's critical, not only for connectivity for both residents, but also for emergency vehicles, and that it has been on the city's radar and screen for the last 30 years. This connection would eliminate two cul-de-sac bulbs that are over 600 feet long, improve the north-south and east-west options of the both proposed and existing neighborhoods. In addition, there were, there are complications with connecting to 32nd Avenue. We've got some offset intersections that create issues. If Robb Street were to connect to 32nd, it would leave Route Street with perhaps double-loaded lots, meaning they'd have frontage on both sides. And this, the complication is further exacerbated by this drainage channel which runs along the western side of the Applewood Baptist lot. The south end of Robb Street is about seven feet below 32nd Avenue and would require substantial fill to bring Robb up to that level. In addition, there might be the requirement for walls to be built. The city does think that a pedestrian connection is important from the subdivision to 32nd Avenue, and we have designed a set of ramps that will meet the ADA standard and provide the pedestrian connection between the new subdivision and 32nd. So, I offer the following requirements that are listed in the subdivision design, excuse me, the subdivision regulations regarding subdivision design and connectivity, and I'm just going to paraphrase. "In all subdivisions, the vehicle access and circulation shall accommodate the safe, efficient, and convenient movement of vehicles, bicycles, pedestrians, and transit through the development as well as to and from adjacent properties and land uses. The proposed street layout shall provide for the continuation of existing planned or platted streets on the surrounding area unless the city determines that such extension is undesirable for specific reasons of topography or design." And finally, "That proposed street shall be extended to the boundary of a subdivision to provide for future connection." So let's talk a little bit about the process that we've been through. This is a subdivision plat application. The property is zoned R1, and the intent of a plat is to look at how land is divided and developed. Again, the property is zoned R1, and the proposed plat does comply with all the minimum standards of that zone district. I would point out that a neighborhood meeting is not required for a plat if the zoning is not changed, which it isn't. We've been through our standard 15-day referral, with no concerns from city departments or agencies. Obviously, there would need to be improvements made to the property in order to provide water and sanitary sewer service and so on. I would point out the fire district has reviewed the plat as proposed and has approved of the design with the turnaround feature between lots 1 and 2. So this was reviewed by Planning Commission on June 1 of this year. Planning Commission did recommend denial for the plat, which showed the 33rd Avenue extension between Route and Quail. And subsequent to that, Planning Commission hearing, the applicant did submit a modified plat, which has been included in your packet. And we did receive numerous letters commenting on it, and I'll get to that in a minute. But let's take a look at that modification to the plat. So, again, this was submitted to us after Planning Commission had their public hearing. And again, it looks a lot the same as before. 32nd Avenue is located down here. This is Route Street as it comes up and ends in the cul-de-sac bulb. And over here is 33rd Avenue as it extends through the Quail Hollow subdivision. However, even though it shows the same sort of depiction with the public street extending to the east of the boundary of Quail, it is not completed through to Route Street. West 33rd Avenue from the terminus of the existing bulb would be paved over to Robb, however it was proposed to be gated and would allow only emergency access and pedestrian access. So essentially, the, from 33rd Avenue in Quail, you come over here and you can turn south on Robb. And again, it does not connect with 32nd Avenue, nor does it extend west to Route Street. Now, staff does not support this design and has concerns regarding delayed emergency vehicle response times endangering public safety for residents in the new subdivision. West Metro has commented regarding fire access and have indicated concern, anytime there is a gate that needs to be opened or unlocked or fiddled with, it can exacerbate the extent of the fire. He gave us kind of a scary statistic, Bruce Croll, that a fire, in one minute, a fire can double. And so, by the time they come down here and fiddle to try to get the gate open and get down, it could be crucial minutes in the event of a life safety situation. I would also note that if City Council wants to move forward with this revised plat design, that we would need a variance to the maximum cul-de-sac length. The maximum in the subdivision regulations is about 750 feet, and this would end up being about a 1,400-foot cul-de-sac situation, and we would need to grant a variance for that to occur. Again, we received numerous letters regarding the request. We had a lot of them submitted as part of the, or at the Planning Commission meeting before the public hearing. We received some after the Planning Commission meeting. And then, we received some again last week and this week. So we went ahead and sent those out, and hopefully you've had a chance to look at those. Primarily, the concerns were traffic safety with the connection of 33rd, although we also heard some comments on drainage and other issues. Staff is recommending approval for the plat version that shows the connection of 33rd Avenue between the Applewood Brookside and the Quail Hollow subdivision for the following reasons: The proposed lots meter exceed the R1 standards. All requirements of the subdivision regulations have been met. The proposed system and drainage design provide a logical development pattern for the subdivision. And also that all agencies can serve the property with improvements installed by the developer. There are four conditions of approval which have been included in your recommended motion. And once again, if council is inclined to approve that third alternative that was brought in by the developer, then we recommend, we can't really continue the case, we would have to repost and renotice it and have a new hearing to include the variance. So that does conclude my comments, and I would be happy to answer questions now.
Thank you, Meredith. Counsel, this is your opportunity. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Meredith, as I, correct me if I'm wrong, but as I remember from the packet, there were three objections to making Robb Street go through to 32nd. One was the disparity in height.
Yeah, the grade change.
Right. The second was the offset from the street across the street.
Yes.
And the third was the length of the cul-de-sac. Is that correct?
The first two that you mentioned, yes, specifically. And then, I guess the third one is the length of the cul-de-sac that would result if we didn't have that piece that went through.
Okay. What makes this different from every other street that faces 32nd Avenue? Every street that, west of Kipling, is offset from the Lakewood Street, except the one that we call Swidely and they call Sims.
Oh, that's right.
Right. So it's offset in name, anyway. So I'm not sure that that would really be a difficulty. Is that, is it, do we have a code that prohibits that, or is that the opinion of staff?
The subdivision regulations, it does talk about access to our higher-level streets, arterials, and collectors, and discourages those. 32nd Avenue is considered an arterial and carries about 14,000 cars per day, and the more accesses onto an arterial like that, the more potential traffic conflicts are created.
But in this case, we have an almost alignment. It is only off slightly.
Yeah, sorry, if I could break in and answer that. So offsets in general are a bad idea. When they're offset, the direction this would be, where the street on the south is to the right and the street on the north is to the left, there's always a chance that when people drive up there and they're looking, they're wanting to turn left, for instance, they'll check left- check left, they'll check right, and then they'll go. Well, someone could be across the street doing the same thing at the exact same time, and they have a head-on collision in the middle of the street. That's the issue with offset streets, especially in this, in this particular direction. There are a lot of offset streets on the street, and in my mind, those are, those were poorly done back in the day, and they're, it's a bad design. It's just a bad design practice. And so, from our, from the staff's standpoint, is, just because it's been done before and there maybe have any accidents, doesn't, still doesn't mean it's a good idea to do it again and continue that.
But we're not legally restrained, it's just a good practice.
No, it's just, it's, it's good design practice not to offset streets particularly that close together, that, and in that particular offset. If, if the street on the north side of the street was to the right a little farther, you don't have that conflict of two people turning left and running into each other at the same time.
Why don't we call Lakewood and ask them to do it?
Yeah, and I don't know why, you know, as a civil engineer, I've never, ever allowed that kind of design. Even when we're looking at driveways, we tried to avoid having just simple driveways line up that way for like, commercial properties and things like that. In my almost 30 years of doing this, I've tried to avoid that. We've moved things around on my side to make sure that didn't happen, for instance, when I was doing retail work. So it's just, I don't know why we have a plethora of those situations along the street. It was just really poor coordination between Wheat Ridge and Lakewood.
Okay.
Probably all happened back when it was Jefferson County, we'll just blame them for it.
Right. Now getting to the height issue, isn't it true that Route has the same problem, exactly the same problem?
Yeah, and they filled the south end of that property to make that work, and the difficulty here is we've got that drainage right next door. So the way the drainage is working is the, the channel and the pipe system that's along that shared property line between them and the church and then farther up to Quail Hollow conveys the minor storm event. The major storm event is flowed overland, and they've designed their street to provide some of that overland flow for the hundreds-year event. We've made sure it won't touch the houses and all that kind of thing, but it's something you can do. You can have, streets are okay to carry major drainage. If we, if we raise the street up, now that street's gonna be above the level of drainage that would virtually require, in this case, underground system the whole way, which becomes very cross-prohibitive with seven lots. If you tried to do something above ground, you'd have to move the street to the west side of the property, and then these people that are buying these new houses, their entire backyard would be a drainage channel. So it really degrades the quality of those lots, and so that's, there are a lot of reasons why the connection to 32nd wasn't made. And again, it's been in the city's vision for the last 30-plus years to connect these streets across and have that connection made to help distribute traffic and provide options for people that are trying to turn in and out.
Sure. I'm not, I'm not equating the two.
Sure.
Because I, yeah. So, in Mr. Merker's original plan, do you know, when he first came to the city, was his plan to raise the street and empty onto Wats, onto 32nd?
No, his plan was, was not to, it's my memory, and my memory's not always great, but my memory is his plan was not to connect 32nd, it was to connect to either the west or the east street and have this just be a very, very long cul-de-sac. We said, "That's a bad idea, we can't have cul-de-sacs that long." And we've designed, back in the 80s and much more recently, to have these streets connect, and that's what we want you to do. And we fought him on it for quite a while, and he finally agreed to make that connection and then build, he wanted to build this as private driveways and all those kind of things. We said, "No, with that many houses, we need to have a public street connection." And so we worked with him for a very long time to get to where we are today.
So, yeah, I'm really not understanding that issue very well, because by that logic, Route is also an illegal cul-de-sac, right?
Yes, which is why we couldn't allow it, because it was much too long.
And so now we're, the Robb Street plan also is an illegal cul-de-sac the way it stands, isn't that right?
No, the way the design is currently, it's not a cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac is just from 33rd Avenue down to the end of the street. Because now that, if the connection's made from Route Street to 33rd, if 33rd's continued west to Route Street, then that's not a cul-de-sac. That actually has two ways in and out, so that's not a dead-end cul-de-sac. The only dead-end cul-de-sac is from 33rd South. If, if, or from, yeah, from 33rd South on Robb Street. If Robb Street's not connected to both streets, then we do have an illegal cul-de-sac that's too long.
Well, Robb, the southern part of Robb Street connects only to one street.
Yes.
In the plan.
Which is okay, yes. The cul-de-sac, the Robb Street is the cul-de-sac now, because 33rd connects across.
And that's, that doesn't exceed the 600 feet?
No, that's, no, no, that doesn't exceed the 750 feet.
750 feet, right.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counsel, other questions? Okay.
Madam, I have a question.
Oh, do you have one?
Yeah. As it relates to, you know, since we're talking about cul-de-sac length, you know, what is the maximum cul-de-sac length recommended by the Institute of Transportation Engineers? Or what is it that we're sort of guiding our, our decision-making process or policy as it relates to that?
Our subdivision regulations have a maximum of 750 feet. I don't know about the ITE manual.
We don't, we don't regulate to the ITE, that's the guy who's talking. We regulate our subdivision length, which is 750 feet.
Okay, and then?
ITE very well could have a longer length, but that's not really regulated.
And then, I guess my concern is it relates to this, this potential subdivision is, there may be other policy recommendations from institutes such as the Institute of Transportation Engineers that would have a better idea of what is plausible within, you know, the framework, and it seems like they would have a better idea of, you know, what is plausible versus, I'm not sure, what is it that we are using to limit ourselves to that 750 feet? What is it that we're saying we can only do 750 feet?
Again, I don't know where that regulation came from, it's in our code, so that's what we regulate to. You know, a lot of the thought behind having shorter cul-de-sac length is to encourage connectivity, both from a pedestrian and a vehicular standpoint, so people have options, so that, you know, the Highlands West thing where they have very, very long cul-de-sacs in today's current thinking is not the ideal situation. Our current thinking today is sort of this new urbanism thing where we have lots more connections, people have options.
Mark, isn't, isn't that a, fire department, don't they have a regulation on cul-de-sac for emergency access?
Again, they could, they very well could. Fire code may have something else about cul-de-sac length, too. They would like to have no cul-de-sacs at all, ever, I'm sure, if that was their choice. But, but again, we regulate our subdivision regulations, and that's what, we didn't go search what, what other people regulate to, because we regulate what we have.
But, but also, I think that the, the fire code would also permit a different type of building mechanism through either sprinklers or otherwise, depending on the length of the cul-de-sac as well, depending on what that length is. So there's also some considerations in that regard as well. So I'm not suggesting that sprinklers are a necessity in this regard, but I think that there is some parameters around that, so I don't think that we need to necessarily say that we're doing this just because this is the way it's always been. We need to understand why it is we have this regulation and go with that. You know, as it relates to new urbanism, I don't think that that's necessarily what this neighborhood is, is about, and I don't think that's the character of this particular neighborhood, or what this neighborhood is gonna look like at any time in the near future, or what these neighbors are, bought their properties for and would want to seek in the near future. So that would concern me. If that's the vision for this neighborhood, I don't see that being something that I would be in favor of.
May I ask a question? The access to the, to Robb Street, which will be the, basically a new street, a full width street, the access egress to it, is that, then the only access egress to it is off 33rd Avenue, that's what you're thinking of? That's what?
Yes.
Okay.
There'll be vehicular access off this new connection of 33rd Avenue. We did, just so that someone that lives at the south end didn't have to walk all the way around, if they wanted to, for instance, walk to Applewood Shopping Center, we did require them to do a pedestrian access that has a series of ramps to get up the five-foot grade. We did a pedestrian connection to 32nd Avenue because that, again, is something that just goes the sidewalk, and now people can, can walk up there and they can walk to the church or they can walk down to Applewood Shopping Center, either way.
Has there, has been a thought at all about not connecting, not connecting 33rd Avenue all the way to Route Street, but instead connect it only to, basically, 33rd Avenue that goes to Quail Court, leaving Route Street with that?
Yeah, but again, now the, now the cul-de-sac, because the nearest connecting street is Quail Street, the cul-de-sac is now all of 33rd and then all of Robb, which gets it up around, around numbers 1,500 feet, which greatly exceeds our 750-foot threshold.
Why would you have to have a cul-de-sac at the end of 33rd?
So, no, you wouldn't, but, but so if, so if we, if we extend 33rd to the, into this subdivision and straight south is Robb Street, our cul-de-sac now starts back at Quail.
Okay.
Because there's not another street that connects. So the cul-de-sac is now from Quail all the way down to the very end of the new Robb Street. By making the connection across, because there's two streets, if, you know, if, if something happens where there's something going on on Route Street where the fire truck can't get there, they can run around to Quail and get into the subdivision, or vice versa. That's the point of having the connecting streets. That way, the cul-de-sac is just Robb Street only, which is 600 or so feet long.
Okay, I understand.
Does that make sense?
Yep, thank you. All right. I believe it's time, is the applicant wish to make any statement? Sir? Please come and introduce yourself, and you did swear in.
Hello, my name's Steve Merker, the applicant for the Merker Estates Project. And I suppose, I gave a little of the background last time, and I've been trying to work with some of the neighbors and with the city. And I'm in sort of a difficult position because I work, I live, and I build inside the city, so this is not my only project with city staff, and we've worked diligently to sort of work through the issues that have come up on this project. And I've sort of, I was initially opposed vehemently so, as Mark had pointed out, to the connection between 30, between 33rd and Route Street, because the original vision for this site was that it was a long, complex parcel with a lot of grade challenges and a lot of drainage that went through it. So it's a very, very difficult site to develop, and had I not bought the, the house to this, to the 11435, it would virtually have been impossible to develop. So, working with the city staff, the connectivity issue came up time and time and time and time again, must have been three or four iterations that we went through. And we came up with an iteration where we finally got to this point, and it's been about a year and a half to get to this meeting where I'm, you know, being introduced to everybody. So, the difficulty is that I, I, I want to take into consideration all the neighbors because I want to live here myself. I want to take into consideration the city staff because I, they're very capable, smart people. And so, I'm literally stuck between two forces where I want to please everybody, and, and there are trade-offs to both. So, we have some alternative recommendations. One of them is the gate. One of them is, to what Mark had just pointed out, is 30, I'm sorry, what you missed, Jay, just pointed out was going in 33rd, taking a left right here and then coming down. As I understand, that presents some other challenges that would have to be worked through. So, I'm trying to get clarity from, from council, from the neighbors, and from staff, and, and I just want this project to move forward in the best way possible for everybody to be happy. And, and, and I think that there are some alternatives that could work, but I also think that this one could work, and so I'm literally left in a very difficult position here. So, I, I don't know if that helps or hurts or complicates the situation, but it's, it's the position that I've been put in, and, and I'm, I just want to do a good job for the project and for the site, and, and develop this in accordance to the vision that I know this could be a great place. So, that would be my remarks. If anybody has questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Ms. Hoppe?
Thanks for coming in this evening. We understand that staff's recommendation is to not connect to 32nd Avenue. What is your opinion on that?
I, I would be very opposed to connecting 32nd Avenue to Robb Street for a lot of reasons. The, the amount of fill and drainage challenge that come up by, by connecting from 32nd into the Robb Street, and, you know, if we just basically took Robb Street from here and then connected all the way to 32nd, would mean that all of these lots would now be brought up, and it would be a giant watershed from this. So it, it makes these houses, in my opinion, very at risk for the 168 acres of watershed that come through this property. There are also a variety of reasons. This is almost 10 feet or 7 feet between 32nd and right here. So bringing it up is, you've, you've got a, you now are driving uphill to take a left-hand, you can't see over your steering, you're just at a very high angle. To make that come out would mean that that thing would have to be, that the grade alone, you're talking about a tremendous amount of fill. I don't have, I don't know where you get that amount of fill. Is it possible? Yes, everything is possible with time and money, that's not something you have with seven lots. You don't have time, you don't have money. This is a very small subdivision to, to bring in that type of resource. I don't have those resources.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, we can now move on to public testimony. I have many names here. We usually ask that you keep to three minutes on your testimony. I'm also gonna ask that if somebody has said something a great deal before, maybe you could say same as, or I agree with, or whatever, so that everybody has a chance to be heard. The other thing that we always ask is not to have any applauding or hooting or whatever, because sometimes that makes others sensitive about speaking themselves, and we all do want to hear all of you, as well as our council does. So, I'm gonna start with public testimony with Dr. Schmidke. I don't know if I messed that up, but, and please come and give your name, spell your last name for the clerk, as well as your address.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Gil Schmidke, S-C-H-M-I-D-T-K-E. I live at 11305 West 33rd Avenue, on the bubble, so to speak. If you look at 33rd Street and you see the little aneurysm there, I am right next to, sorry. So I'm on the aneurysm, and I'm the closest neighbor to the project. And I'm anxious to have some nice homes built there. We are new to Colorado and new to Wheat Ridge. When we surveyed where we wanted to live, we noticed the neat neighborhoods that Wheat Ridge has, small communities. And, and that's kind of neat, and we are trying to do the same thing in Quail Hollow. We've already had parties and trying to become a community. Now, I totally understand Route Street saying, "We have a community there, we have a street." And I can understand why they're concerned about 33rd Avenue connecting with it and becoming not a neighborhood, but a thoroughfare. And I feel the same thing will happen to 33rd Street. Now, I understand the issues that you're facing, trying to make egress from the school easier for people that drive their children to school. But I don't think you need to hurt another neighborhood to do that, to help people at the school, nor do I think that we need to have more traffic. I, I think it seems so practical to take our 12 homes and combine it with six or seven homes that he's proposing, and now we have another neighborhood. Maybe the 750 feet or something is an issue, but what I'm saying is that it does make some sense, 33rd could certainly be, can accommodate seven more homes. Could it handle all the traffic from the school? I'm not sure. But those people that have been living with that, they came to that school with that in mind, and they know that. Route Street, by the way, we walk it all the time, boy, even with the pool there, the traffic can be very difficult getting out of Route Street. So connecting 33rd to Route, I don't see how that's, I don't, I don't see how that makes things safer. But as the closest neighbor to this development, I would welcome connection. It's gotta get in and out. I don't see 32nd, getting on 32nd from there. But 33rd Street would be a practical, and to me, as the closest neighbor, an acceptable alternative.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, your time.
Ross Casados, Casados, and then Peggy Nielsen. Maybe you could get ready if Peggy would be lined up and available.
Good evening. My name is Ross Casados, C-A-S-A-D-O-S. I live at 3291 Route Street. I live at 3291 Route Street. I'm here tonight because I'm having surgery tomorrow, so I want to make sure that you understand how important this is to me and my community on Route Street. I have raised my children for 27 years in that cul-de-sac. I peeled it, picked the cul-de-sac because it is quiet. I don't know how many of you live in a cul-de-sac, and I'm sure you would appreciate it as opposed to a thoroughstreet. My kids are grown up now, and I have grandchildren. And the problem I have now is that I have challenged grandchildren who love to play on the street. If you do a thoroughway through there, from the school, or whatever, you're going to endanger my grandchildren. It's going to become a very busy street. If you're traveling south, it's an uphill battle. And during the winter time, we are lucky to be able to get out from Route onto 32nd Street. If you double and triple that with the school people doing that, it's going to be even I've already expressed a lot of this. I don't have a problem with Mr. Merker building his houses there, but I don't see the feasibility or the logic connecting 33rd Street all the way to Route. Time that I've spent there, the fire engines that have responded to my neighbor's house have been quite a few in the last year. They have no trouble with their fire engines or the police cars getting in there and out. Why they need another access point, I guess I just don't get that from, from you guys there. But I just want to stress to you that I am really concerned among my challenged grandchildren playing in the street, with cars leaving the school at a deadly rate, trying to get home, or for whatever reason. I also understand that in the future, you can correct me, I'm sure you will, about 32nd Street being a thoroughway from Golden when they build the new center out there, it's going to use 32nd to go all the way to downtown, which is increasing the traffic. Again, I've loved living in this cul-de-sac for 27 years, and I hope that you won't disturb that for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peggy Nielsen, followed by Jeff Nielsen, and then Doug Fisher. Jeff, could you, could you be standing, waiting in line?
Hello, my name is Peggy Nielsen, N-I-E-L-S-E-N. I live at 3281 Route Street. And I don't have a prepared speech, but I just want to clarify again, I'm a little frustrated that the information put forth from the city does not even address the traffic from Prospect Valley School, which would be a huge issue for us. And again, I just feel, I don't understand why there's a need to create this new neighborhood at the expense of those of us who live on Route Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Jeff, followed by Doug Fisher, or Flasher, I believe, Fisher.
My name is Jeff Nielsen, 3281 Route Street. I just reiterate what my wife said regarding traffic from the school, because we do feel due to the large open enrollment at that school, that there'll be a lot of traffic in the mornings and in the afternoons. I agree with what the people have said previously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being so brief.
I'm Doug Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R, 3220 Route Street. And I, like the rest, most folks here, are totally against cutting 33, 33rd Avenue through to Route. But I want to talk about a different issue, which hasn't really been addressed yet. And that's the issue of the neighborhood culture, the neighborhood. As it stands, Merkwood is proposing seven home sites on 4.9 acres. On the surface, that seems pretty reasonable. But if you take a closer look at it, you'll see that six of those homes are crammed onto half of that parcel on the south side between 33rd and 32nd. Now, according to what I've gathered from the Merkwood folks, they plan on putting a mix of two-story homes on these six parcels, maybe seven parcels. And they plan on selling these homes for around $1.2 million. Now, if you can imagine, those are huge homes, and they're, they're just very tiny lots. These six homes would back up to the five homes on, on Route Street. The five homes on Route Street are, all with the exception of one home, single-level ranch-style homes. They plan on cramming these huge two-story homes with limited setback right up against these five homes. That's going to change the culture, that's going to rob the current residents on Route Street of any backyard privacy whatsoever. All the homes in Quail Hollow are ranch-style homes, and all, as I said, all but one of the homes along the east side of Route are ranch-style homes. It's just not a good idea. There's nobody living in the neighborhood who thinks cutting 33rd through to Route is a good idea. And there's also nobody who lives in the neighborhood who thinks the currently proposed development plan is a good idea. It would change the culture of the whole neighborhood. The folks who are for this development are the developers who would get, who would make tons of money at our expense. So I'm asking you to vote against this proposal as designed.
Thank you, Doug. David Haye, followed by Rebecca, and then Dwayne Chesley.
My name is David Haye, H-A-Y. I live at 3280 Route Street. We bought our home five years ago because it was on a cul-de-sac, and it was quiet. Like many here, I oppose having 33rd come through, with or without a gate. As has been expressed before, worried about the traffic from the school and those who use its facilities. With the gate, once a look at, look at the gate, not fairly neighborly, seems like you could make that connection with a knock-down traffic barrier like we've seen all over the Clear Green Path. I feel like there should be, there's a way to do the emergency access needed. Maybe you put the gate at 33rd, at 32nd Avenue at the end of Robb Street. They got semis in and out of there without any trouble to dump dirt, why can't they get a fire engine in and out of there with the gate? When we bought the house, we knew about the right-of-way to property behind us, but our understanding was that it was just to access the property behind us, because it was two properties at the time, and wouldn't be able to get a proper driveway in from 32nd. The diagram shown today was the first time I'd ever seen any plans that suggested 33rd Avenue would ever go through. 2007, the original Quail Hollow, Quail Hollow plat was provided, that didn't have a 33rd Avenue go through, and there was no mention of changing it to make it that way. So it seems that nobody wants this connection. Residents don't want it. Mr. Merker didn't want it, until recently, the city didn't want it. Why do it now? Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan talks over and over about the desire to work with neighborhoods, maintain character, and maintain property values. Quote, "The city will continue to work with neighborhoods to focus on improving stability, homeownership, property values, significant, protecting significant views, and provide high-quality infill in established neighborhoods." The city has not worked with us, and over the year and a half, we've never been consulted. We didn't even know there was a new plan until last Thursday, when we looked at the packet. There's a lot of unknowns. So I ask you tonight to please reject this application.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Rebecca, and then Dwayne Chesley. Dwayne, could you be ready? Thank you, Dwayne.
Good evening, my name is Rebecca Haye of 3280 Route Street. I have two, two points I'd like to make. I, again, would like to express concern over the elevation. Our home is at 3280 Route, which is one of the lowest ones in the cul-de-sac. We have been informed by, through conversations with the Merkwood, that they would likely want to have walkout basements, and then the homes would be two stories, and that they would be built at a higher elevation than our current home. So I am concerned, as the previous person mentioned, about the new homes looming over mine, but I am mainly concerned about the drainage from these six homes on the south part of the plat. We spent a lot of time at the planning meeting earlier in the month, talking about the drainage, and how that would go over the Applewood Baptist property, but no mention was made of the amount of water collected from this new roofs, from these six homes, and how that would be handled. If the homes were to be built at a higher elevation, I don't understand how the runoff from that would be handled, and I don't want to see it all in my basement. And I would like to encourage that the developer would, would be required to submit drawings and renderings similar to those that were submitted for Quail Hollow. I believe that they are not required to, due to the size of the subdivision, but in the filings for Quail Hollow, you can see designs of the homes and the renderings of the elevation. Again, I do not think it's acceptable, the proposed plan of an emergency gate and a pedestrian walkway connecting Route to 33rd. There is no guarantee that the city will not just come and, and remove the gate at a later time. And to me, this seems to be a weak attempt at mildly appeasing the neighborhood objections in a way to get the developer what he's looking for. And looking at recent documents, the development of Fireside at Applewood, which is the new subdivision that was put in just east of the Color Strand on 38th there, that has about 52 homes in it. It seems that the cul-de-sac there is, is very long, there is only one access point into there, but what they have done is, they have a gate that goes from one of the red, one of the streets out onto 38th, which I believe to be a busier street than 32nd? That's incorrect, but that would be my guess. And it, it is locked, a locked gate, it looks like a regular driveway, but there's a locked gate with a dedicated lock on it for the fire department. So I guess one of the questions I would have is how come that subdivision was allowed to come through? It's basically a big O, but there's only one way in and out. And I would have some of the many same concerns that have been proposed here. Similarly, the subdivision behind the rec center, the Cambridge Park, has a similar thing. There you have a gated, a security gate with a great big O, and there appears to be some sort of service entrance at about 39th and Miller. That gate is unlocked, it's a double gate, so a very large vehicle, or probably two very large vehicles could pass. I would like to propose that the city consider leaving Route Street alone, making the 33rd go up to Robb Street, and consider if a similar gate to the ones in Fireside at Applewood, or Cambridge Park, could be put at the top of 32nd and Robb Street, to allow the emergency access that the city keeps bringing up, as the reason for needing to poke into Route Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Dwayne, and then Danielle?
My name is Dwayne Chesley, C-H-E-S-L-E-Y. I live at 3261 Route Street. I've lived in Wheat Ridge 55 years, and rarely have I had the need to come before council, but this is one issue that demands my attention, certainly. As I sent each of you an email explaining my situation, the connection between Quail and Route as a street makes no sense. It would only degrade the quality of three neighborhoods, Quail Hollow, Route Street, and then the soon-to-be-developed Robb Street. A gate possibility, like it's been said, a locked gate is not always going to be a locked gate. So I'm very much opposed to a through street there, for obvious reasons. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dwayne. Danielle, and then Anthony Marcello?
I'm Daniel Marcello, M-A-R-C-E-L-L-O. I live at 3241 Route Street. My parents built their dream house on a quiet cul-de-sac to raise their three children, me being one of them. My mom is very proud that she has been a Wheat Ridge resident her whole life, and she graduated from Wheat Ridge High School. I loved growing up in the cul-de-sac. We all take very good care of our homes and the neighborhood, and the neighbors care about each other. It has proven that crime, crime rate is higher on through streets, children are less likely to play outside, and our homes will be devalued by 20 to 29 percent. Why is a road that, why is this road so important when it will benefit no one and harm many? Obviously, a gate is better than a through street, but we would need some assurance that the gate could not be removed, or just left open later. Is it in the city council's power to assure us of that? Or can the planning department and city council ask the builders to design some alternative that would prevent 33rd from becoming a busy through street? That sounds like what the builders want as well. Maybe Route Street should be left a cul-de-sac and save everyone the costs. I am fearful that the planning department will keep coming back with 33rd as a through street over and over again. We hope the planning department and the city council can come to some agreement that would cause less, less trauma to our three neighborhoods. We need to have faith and trust in our government to not cause three neighborhoods to become less than they are and can. I feel my parents have been extremely traumatized by this whole event. It's literally been the center of their lives for the past three weeks. The neighborhood has been unnecessarily harassed for a road that seems to have no real purpose. In regard to the offset street, why would you run 125 more cars four times a day from Prospect Valley up to an offset street that an engineer says is extremely dangerous? Route and the new Robb have the same offset, so it is dangerous to open 33rd up for the Prospect Valley cars to take.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Anthony, and then David Moss?
Good evening, my name's Anthony Marcello, and I reside at 3241 Route Street, right there on my daughter Danielle and my wife Lori. So, first of all, I just want to go through a couple other points here. I was just wondering, with the hammerhead turnaround for the emergency vehicles, Mr. Engineer, did, what is the design vehicle for West Metro that you did the turning templates on, to make sure that that, the fire vehicles can navigate in that hammerhead and back out? You didn't, we haven't checked that, to make sure that that's big enough? Oh, okay. I would just like to know, because I, I dealt with that recently, and we had to use their design vehicle to make sure it worked. And then, the whole argument, and I have the Wheat Ridge regulations here, and it says, "The center of the cul-de-sac bulb shall not be longer than 750 feet from the center line of the intersecting street." So, the intersecting street, if you read this verbatim, it doesn't say the intersecting through street, it just says the intersecting street. And Robb Street would be within 750 feet of the intersecting street. Furthermore, we're not setting a precedence if we did just make the 33rd over to Robb connection and not even mess with Route Street, we wouldn't be setting any new precedences. I don't know if I'm allowed, can I give a handout to everybody?
To council, yes. Please give it to the clerk.
If you, if you could, please, I would just like to go through a few things, a few points, and that haven't been necessarily discussed yet. The maps are compliments of Google Earth, but I made some edits to them for clarity Everybody gets them. I'll run through this very quick. I appreciate everybody's patience, thank you. All right, if we start on the first sheet that says connectivity at the top... If we start on the first sheet that says connectivity at the top, there's been a lot of talk about connectivity. Well, 33rd really, all it connects is Quail to Route Street, and there would be no out-of-way, why would people leave 32nd to connect to something there unless you live in that neighborhood? Even the Pearson Street, Quail Street is currently a U. Those people wouldn't even, that doesn't connect them to anything except more residential streets. If they're leaving to get out to go up 32nd, which I think is a major collector, I'm not sure if it's an arterial or not, I thought last time I checked it was a major collector, but regardless, it doesn't really connect anything east of Pearson or west of Route Street. So connectivity means that you're reducing travel times for people. Actually, if all the residents in this area utilized 33rd, they'd be increasing their travel times. So in this case, connectivity really does not apply. If you flip over to the next sheet that says connectivity again, it's a much bigger map, Lena Golds through this area inherently just bisects the whole area, and that's why it was designed kind of the way it does, way it is. Precedent's been set. Sim Street does not go through. Now, that would provide connectivity. The only connectivity between 38th and 32nd right now is Ward, and almost a half a mile east is Parfait. Nothing connects those in the center, but by your argument with the vision, you know, there, Sims could have been connected, 35th and Tabor could have been connected, Union Street going, you see all these other connections that weren't ever made, then now that's true connectivity because that neighborhood that comes down Tabor to 35th or Sims to 35th there, they have to go all the way back out to 38th to go like up to King Supers, whereas if that connection would have been made at those two cul-de-sacs, they could have then proceeded and with no out-of-direction travel to get to King Supers. That's what people mean by connectivity. That's what connectivity is, the benefit of the greater good to reduce travel times. Nobody's going to detour off 32nd to take 33rd and improve connectivity. It just doesn't make sense. So if you flip to the next page, it says cul-de-sacs, and you can kind of see the yellow there. I've highlighted 23 cul-de-sacs just between Ward Road and Parfait Street. And again, there's so many of those because Lena Golds bisects right through the area. Cul-de-sacs are not new in this, in this area. There's 23 of them, and I just wanted to highlight all of those. Now, if you go to the next page, I'm showing here on 35th Street. See, 35th was never connected except with a pedestrian walkway, which me and my wife frequently walk our dog, we walk over to the park and everything there. Pedestrian connectivity is fabulous for Wheat Ridge. So many people walk their dogs and enjoy that park. But I just highlighted from the nearest intersecting street. So we have a current condition of 845, which is greater than the 750. Sim Street is 1125, 1125 feet to dead end. Route Street, 645, which is under the 750. If you go to the next sheet over, I just wanted to show that blow-up of that area. Now, on West 35th, if you look at that eastern bulb, and I know I just said it was, what, 845 feet to that first intersecting street, but that's a cul-de-sac. The one above that's a cul-de-sac. You have to go literally a quarter of a mile, 1,400 and some feet to get to 38th Avenue. So we've set precedents already, you know, this, by doing this with Merkwood from 33rd just up to the end of theirs, doesn't set a precedence in Wheat Ridge. The precedent's already been set. This is evidently done here all the time. The emergency response connecting Route would be no value. West Metro would respond to Parfait Street. That's the quickest one. Why would they bypass Quail to go to Route Street to come back east and up Robb Street? They wouldn't. They'd come up Quail Street, come down to, or come up Parfait to 32nd to Quail and over. That would be their quickest route anyway. So I don't, I don't feel how the response times would be any different. As a matter of fact, I don't think anybody'd use Route. I don't believe that that argument's really something that carries a lot of weight on this. And then the last page is showing it would be 930 feet just from the nearest intersecting street where I highlighted from yellow. If you just made that one connection and not punched it through, just made the connection to Robb Street. From the end of the bulb, it's a lot less, it's even less than the 750 feet, but from the nearest intersecting street, which is what this says, it's 930 feet, which is well within the realm of everything else in Wheat Ridge. So, and I know I'm going over my time, and I sincerely appreciate your patience, but I just want to read one thing, and if I may, Mary, I'd like to quote you, that we would just say that "we must find ways to hold on to the uniqueness of our city." And that's what we want to do. Wheat Ridge is a wonderful place. We've raised three beautiful kids here. All these people have raised families. We love Wheat Ridge. We just want to keep the uniqueness of our city. So thank you very much.
Was that a quote from me?
It was.
That was good.
Yes. Right here, and you know, I read the little flyers, so good information in there, but Wheat Ridge is great, and we want to keep it that way, so we are opposed to 33rd all the way through. I am. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
David Moss, and then Matt Glover, it looks like?
Good evening. I'm David Moss, M-O-S-S. I live at 3221 Route Street, and you know, I concur with all of my neighbors. We don't want to see any property devaluation because we become a through street. One of my observations is the fact that there was a lot of talk in the proposal about the fact that West Metro Fire would have extended response times if 33rd wasn't cut all the way through to Route Street, and the fact that it would make a, I believe it was a 1,400-foot cul-de-sac. Really, in all honesty, no matter how you look at it, Robb Street is going to be a 1,400-foot cul-de-sac. It doesn't matter whether you're coming from Route Street or whether you're coming from Quail Street. It ends up being a 1,400-foot cul-de-sac. Closest fire station, as you all know, is the one over at 38th Avenue. They're not going to come to Route Street to respond. They'll go down Quail. As a, as an alternative, they've also got Pearson Street that they can use. One of the neighbors mentioned the fact that, you know, their kids play on the street all the time. Just yesterday, I was standing at my kitchen sink, and our kitchen happens to look right out onto Route Street, and I was observing one of the neighborhood children riding down the street, down the middle of the street on her skateboard. Is that, is that safe? No. Is it what all kids do? Yes. And she was riding down the street on her skateboard, and about five seconds behind her as she started down our street, I observed one of our other neighbors pull down the street in their pickup truck, and he slowed down and just crawled down our street to allow her safe passage on her skateboard. If we had 33rd Avenue cut through and we had all these parents picking, picking up and dropping off their children from the elementary school, I can see those parents being in a rush, you know, rounding that corner down at the bottom of 33rd and Route and, you know, not, not carrying a hoot whether there's any kids out there playing there in a hurry to get home and do their, their evening business or, or get to work and take care of that. So I don't think that there's any, any upside to building 33rd Avenue all the way to Route Street. And again, one of the neighbors mentioned that, you know, we have a hard time getting out of Route Street in the wintertime, and if you shunt half of the drivers from the elementary school up our street, they're just going to turn it into an ice rink. You know, it'll, it'll make it impossible for not only the people that live there, but also the parents dropping their children off.
Thank you, Matt. Or you're David, sorry. Next is Matt. I checked off the wrong one here. Matt, and then followed by Carlos?
My name's Matt Glover. I live at 11355 West 33rd Avenue, right next to the development. I'd like to say first that I'm not unsympathetic with the developer. I've been through this process myself, and it takes time. I also realize that we all don't get everything we want in a deal. There has to be a little bit of something in it for all of us. I've strongly felt from the very beginning that the access to this property should have been off of 32nd. It would leave two cul-de-sac communities intact. I realize it presents challenges. However, I've been in the construction business since 1978, so I'm used to challenges. Now, one thing that the two neighborhoods agree on is that we don't, either one of us want a through street. I'm not going to be so presumptuous as to tell you how you should decide, but I will tell you I have concerns. If 33rd were to be connected, what would happen to our bubble cul-de-sac that is in front of our houses right now? What would that look like? Who would be responsible for that? Also concerned about the construction traffic that would come down 33rd during school time and every other time, and the damage to our new roads because we do have a new subdivision. I'm concerned about the safety of the kids that are, if you've ever been up there when they get out of school, they're running everywhere. I'm concerned about cars driving too fast and the, and the kids, the children in our neighborhood. So you have a very, very difficult decision to make, and I understand that. On the one hand, you've got a developer trying to get his project done. On the other hand, you have two neighborhoods that want to retain their independence and their cul-de-sac communities, and I think there's a way to mitigate it, and I think, in my personal opinion, it's coming off of 32nd. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Fawcett, or Carlos? And Ray Archer, would you please be ready?
Good evening. My name is Carlos Fawcett. That's F-A-W-C-E-T-T. I live at 3240 Route Street. We are opposed to the connection of Route and 33rd as well, for many reasons. I'll keep it short. You're taking a cul-de-sac community of 25-plus years and giving the benefit to a brand-new subdivision. We, for the last 13 years, were new to Route Street, only been there for about a year, but for the last 13 years lived in Denver County just off of 37th and Teyon. And the development over there is great, it's amazing. We were happy it came. However, it did bring a lot of traffic through our street. One of the reasons why we liked Route is because it is a cul-de-sac community. They're great neighbors. Everybody cares about each other and takes care of their property. It's going to destroy that 25-year community, I believe. It's a community that's been around for a very long time, and it seems like a great community. It doesn't approve anyone's safety, the community, nor the value of anyone's property. In fact, it just seems like it's going to decrease safety, community, and the value of everyone's home. It's unsafe to have, if it's unsafe to have the new Merkwood subdivision connect to 32nd, then it's also unsafe to increase traffic from Route onto 32nd. I feel that connecting six homes to 33rd doesn't create an undue hardship on Quail Hollow, but connecting Quail Hollow and Merkwood to Route does create a hardship and devalues all homes on Route Street. So we are opposed to this connection as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Archer, followed by Lori Marcello. We've heard that name before.
My name is Raymond Archer, and I live at 3130 Union Street. Last name spelled A-R-C-H-E-R, and Union Street, of course, is in Lakewood, but I really feel I'm part of Wheat Ridge more than Lakewood because I was one of the developers of this property, Applewood Brookside, in the 80s with my dad. He had a builder's license built in the community for, starting in the 50s until he passed in 96, and I built with him for about 10 years. Also, all four of my, well, four of my five kids went to Wheat Ridge High School. Currently, I have three grandkids at Prospect Valley, and, well, my wife taught at Prospect Valley 14 years, special needs kids, so we relate to Wheat Ridge a lot. Plus, I have a son living in Applewood Brookside now in the house that my dad built for himself. A builder, he could build his own house anywhere. He chose this subdivision to build his house in retirement for this same reason that many of the people have already told you, and several of those are buyers that we built for. I just wanted to address a little bit, one thing sticks in my craw, and that's calling this an illegal cul-de-sac. It's 675 feet, I believe, and the elevation's 750. So I think Route is legal. I could be wrong. The dedication for 33rd came about, we had our subdivision plat drawn, ready for submittal, and Consolidated Mutual turned us down because it would be a dead-end water main. And a man named Wally Welton, he wasn't chairman back then, but he was the engineer on this case, worked with me, and we agreed to do a builder, bigger pipe, put in another fire hydrant with a T, and give him an easement where 33rd would be so we could turn it ultimately and go up to 32nd. That was the whole deal. So I went and discussed with the staff, and it was going to be a 20-foot utility easement, and one thing led to another, and Perry, Ralph Perry and his wife talked with us, Ralph did, and said, "If you're going to do that, why don't you make it big enough so that I can have access to my property?" But it was originally so that future subdivisions could turn that dead-end water main into back to 32nd. That was the original. Now, I understand why planning staff would want to connect it, probably, but if it doesn't benefit anybody, there's no more land to develop down there, so some of the other proposals would probably work. I drive kids, my grandkids, twice a week to Prospect, three of them, well, one moved on to Manning, so it was two, and that traffic paddles, not for the faint of heart, getting in and out of there. And I can just see, and I would do the same thing if my friends and people we built for didn't live on Route. I would just come straight out of Prospect's parking lot, all the way down to Route and turn left. And that would work, except on rainy days and snowy days when nobody can get up Route because it is almost a 5% grade. So, you know, I'm very pro-development. I think that would be a nice place to end the development in that area, but got to figure out something about the traffic going down. Thank you.
Thank you much for that history.
Thank you, Ray. Lori, and once again, if you've, if we've already, maybe you could, we've already heard that...
I'm different, Lori, and I do have...
She's, she's going to give us something different.
Sorry.
And then Stefan Archer?
My name is Lori Marcello, M-A-R-C-E-L-L-O. We built our home 27 years ago at 3241 Route Street. I spoke to Debbie Perry on Saturday. She is the previous landowner who sold the property to Merkwood Construction. She asked me to convey the following message. She's approved this, and all of her information for contact is at the bottom of this. You can call her or email her to confirm it. She said that Merkwood's original plans were quite different than what is being presented now. Debbie was excited to sell to Merkwood because they wanted to put in several net-zero, environment-friendly homes on a private street and thought this would be a pleasant complement to the area. But apparently, Merkwood Construction was told by the city planning department that they needed to make 33rd a through street in order for the city to approve their development. So instead of something special, this had to be redesigned with a through street. There's obviously other alternatives. The Perrys bought the property in the late 70s, and the property was surrounded by five-acre undeveloped parcels. She was undeniably certain that in the 1980s, there was absolutely no plans for any through street on her property. Why would they arbitrarily put roads through undeveloped fields? If there was a road, the house they planned to build would have been right smack in the middle of that road. She remembers that some of the neighbors from Applewood Brookside, excuse me, from Applewood Brookside, had contacted the city to vacate the right-of-way. She asked us to leave the right-of-way open so that their property would not become landlocked. The city then contacted the owner at the end of the cul-de-sac and asked them to maintain the right-of-way for the Perrys' landlocked property. That's item one, which is also exhibit five that they've been using as an example of a through street. Through the years, she has seen... Through the years, she has seen plans for all the adjacent properties, including Applewood Baptist Church, and never once has there been plans for Thirty-third being a through street. There were no plans for Thirty-third as a through street in the 2007 city-approved Quail Hollow Development, see items two and three. She feels that Thirty-third is unnecessary and unbeneficial to anyone in the area. It devalues the existing homes and creates a less safe environment. The homeowners in Applewood Brookside always knew of this right-of-way, but it was only to give her access to her landlocked property, and certainly was never meant to be a through street. She said she thinks the city was aware of this as well. Also, the 2007-approved Quail Hollow minutes, see item four, says staff has concluded that granting of the variance for this longer cul-de-sac would not alter the character of the area. There are several cul-de-sacs serving subdivisions in the vicinity which exceed 500 feet, the Applewood Brookside subdivision to the west, where Route Street is 675 feet long and was platted in 1983. Also, Steve McHenry's city letter of approval, item number three, emphasizes that a cul-de-sac configuration allows the subdivision to be developed in a way which is environmentally sensitive and less impactive to the residents. Her last point was this, the city allowed a one-street access road to the Quail Hollow Development and was all approved and built. Now, the plans would extend that road by just one block more for the emergency equipment. Markwood builders are asking for the exact same one-street access consideration that Quail Hollow was allowed and are being denied. Again, this is Debbie Perry's contact information. She said you are free to call her with any questions. I thank you for your time, and if you have any questions about the attachments, you can ask me afterwards. Thank you very much.
Stephen or Stefan Archer, followed by Michelle Hilliam?
Hello. Steven Archer.
Oh, thanks.
Excuse me, last name A-R-C-H-E-R. I live at 3260 Route Street. I had quite a few things prepared, but my neighbors have brought most of, not all of them up. The only thing I'd like to read is to please look at the section marked "Area Traffic Circulation" in page three of the agenda. The third paragraph under "Area Traffic Circulation" stating that Thirty-third has clearly been the city's intent to provide this street connection since the early 80s has proven to be incorrect by several plat maps, by Ray Archer, my father, as he just spoke, the Applewood Brookside builder's statement, and Debbie Perry's statement, as Lori just said. Also, it is not on the 2007-approved Quail Hollow plat, which ends in a cul-de-sac. As you can tell, I'm opposed to Thirty-third going through, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Michelle Hilliam?
Good evening.
Help me with that.
I'm Michelle Hillam, H-I-L-L-A-M.
Okay.
I'm at 3310 Route Street, which is just right at the end of that bulb. I'm concerned mostly with the traffic pattern, if the street goes through, with respects to Prospect Valley Elementary School. I'm actually retired financial principal secretary from Prospect Valley. Prospect Valley has approximately 500 students, take a few here and there. Eighty percent of Prospect Valley students are choice-enrolled, which means all of those students are brought in by their parents because they do not live in the actual footprint of the neighborhood of the school. So we're having 400 children being dropped off and then picked up and brought in for Parents' Field Day, brought in for kindergarten nights, brought in for parent-teacher conferences. So we have approximately, even if you put two students per vehicle, approximately 250 or 200 cars, two, three, and sometimes even more than that each day. So most of that traffic, obviously, now comes out often Quail and Parfay. But then we would bring most of that traffic, or some of that traffic, through Route Street, which right now, the character of Route Street is a nice, quiet cul-de-sac, small subdivision. Whereas if you add all of these cars and traffic to that, it no longer keeps that subdivision a safe traffic pattern for the people who live on Route Street. And that's what I have to say tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Mark Hilliam? And then Lori Strand?
My name is Mark Hillam, H-I-L-L-A-M. I live at 3310 Route Street. Most of the things I would like to say have been mentioned, with the housing density difference was mentioned as well, the number of cars that are going through there on a daily basis. There are other options to get emergency access based on the turnaround and the small size that's been evaluated for the access to Robb Street. You could easily put a single lane, emergency access lane, if you wanted to, that went through that was only emergency access, and there are plenty of types of barriers that could be put up that do not allow traffic to flow through, but a fire truck or whatever could easily just drive over those, and they would pop back up or whatever. There's plenty of engineered solutions that would suffice to do that, to prevent this from being required to be a through street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now I would like Lori Strand, followed by Kate Dean.
Hello, my name is Lori Strand, and I live at 3445 Quail Court. I live at the end of the cul-de-sac in the Quail Hollow subdivision, and you received my letter tonight, hot off the press, I think it was the last to be received, so it's at the top of your pile. I agree with a lot of what was said tonight. I, too, am primarily concerned with through traffic on Thirty-third Avenue. I just moved to the neighborhood from northwest Denver in September. I have a three-and-a-half-year-old who is a madman on his tricycle, and a two-year, who has a two-year-old brother who would very much like to be a madman on his tricycle once he can reach his pedals. So I'm primarily concerned with through traffic from the school in the morning and the afternoon hours. I will say, I'm generally supportive and, in fact, excited about the development of the lot next to us, the property next to us. Myself and my neighbor, Kate, who's going to speak in a minute, we've actually talked about, maybe there'll be more families there, maybe there'll be more kids to play with, there'll be another sidewalk for our kids to ride on without having to go onto Thirty-second Avenue, which is really exciting. But I think there's other alternatives here, and I request tonight that you deny the plat that's before you, to provide an opportunity for the developer to go back to the table and perhaps to discuss the emergency access option more fully with the fire district. I know that somebody spoke earlier tonight about some other communities that have done gates, and it has satisfied the fire district, fireside being one of them. So I don't think that we should kind of push that aside. I think there's an opportunity for them to go back, talk with the fire district, talk more with staff, and kind of appease the concerns with the neighbors. I don't see that there's any benefit to the existing neighborhoods. Really, the only support I've heard tonight is from the developer and staff. So I request you to deny tonight and send them back to the table, and I'm excited. I'm excited about the potential development, I truly am, and hope there's some more families and that's safe for all of us.
Thank you, Lori.
Actually, I'm sorry, I was, I have one more set of comments from my neighbors who could not be here tonight. So my neighbors Leo and Jane Sands live immediately adjacent to me, and I'm just going to read a couple bullets from their comments, which you also received. "I'm writing to document our objections to certain aspects of the above referenced project, i.e. the Markwood Homes development. Current plans call for connection of Thirty-third Avenue to Robb Street, creating very real safety concerns for the residents of Quail Hollow, especially for the many young children playing near their homes in Quail Hollow and on Quail Court." I know that Jane and Leo have young grandchildren that are the same age as my children, so they are concerned. "The Markwood project needs to ensure that Robb Street opens to Thirty-second Avenue to obviate the need to use Quail Hollow's Quail Court as a through street. Robb Street should be closed to Quail Court, Thirty-third Avenue, to lessen the child's safety concerns for Quail Hollow, as well as to eliminate additional hazardous traffic from Prospect Valley Elementary School. A traffic light on Thirty-second and Quail would make it safer to exit Quail and Robb onto Thirty-second Avenue, going both east and west, and would help greatly to make pre- and post-school day traffic a safer proposition." And they thank you for your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Kate Dean, followed by Nicholas Marcello?
Hi, I'm Kate Dean. I am at 3350 Quail Court, so right where Thirty-third Avenue meets Quail Court, so one of the most affected homes in Quail Hollow. And I have a two-and-a-half-year-old and one on the way, and we are in fully agreement with what Lori said, so I'll keep it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Followed by Mr. DiTulio?
Hi, I'm Nick Marcello. I live at 3241 Route Street. And I just wanted to say, as a youth growing up in the cul-de-sac, I really appreciated it, especially because, you know, kids are kids, and when I was a kid, I'd always kick the ball out of the driveway or something, it'd roll into the street, and I really appreciated that it had the cul-de-sac because it made me feel a little bit safer, and, you know, that's about it. And then I was just curious, how many people in the room are against connecting Quail to Route Street with Thirty-third? Sorry about, how many people are against connecting Quail to Route Street with Thirty-third? Okay, we got 31, 31 including me? All right, so I just wanted to see how many there were, and it looks like there's 31 people in this room against it. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Mr. DiTulio? Mr. DiTulio has declined. We are done with public testimony, and now we can, might be some, let me get back here where we were. Any more applicant response? That would be a time that I would ask for that.
Madam Mayor.
Would you like to say something, sir?
Thanks for all the input from you guys. If city council is inclined to vote against this as is, I would ask for a continuance if that is possible, or some, I don't know what the mechanism is, but I have presented some options that take all of these things into consideration, and I don't know what happens if it's denied. I don't want to start from scratch, and I think there are a couple of good options that I've presented. Specifically, Thirty-third just taking a left down Robb Street, and then the pedestrian connection at the end of Robb Street, everything would stay the same, it would just not go all the way through. I've sent that as an alternative. I've also proposed the fire access restriction as an alternative. And the reason I didn't raise my hand when you asked to vote is obvious, I'm in a very difficult situation here. But there are some very good alternatives that we could sort through. It sounds like there's an overwhelming response from both communities. I can't in good conscience sit and build my own home in a community where everybody is opposed to what I'm doing. So that, if you guys are going to deny it, we've satisfied all the city's recommendations and regulations. The challenge is, if you deny it, that means that the approval of a variance would have to be put before a vote. Otherwise, I can't do something with this property, and it's a very unfair situation for me, is I've done everything that the city has recommended, everything, I've followed every rule, I always follow the rules, and to then follow those rules only to be told that you can't follow those rules by your neighbors, saying that, "Hey, you know what? I don't like what you're building, so you can't do it," is a very difficult situation because now I would, I'm sort of throwing myself at the feet of city council, saying, "Hey, I'm completely open to all, to taking into consideration everything that the neighbors have put forth." And I think I have two great options. I have the fire restriction option. I also have the left-hand turn option. And the left-hand turn option is by far the biggest, what people would be in most favor of, because we would just give back the easement, if that's even in our power to do. We just turn left, it just adds seven more houses to the Quail Hollow development. It goes from a sort of a 700-foot or 1,000-feet to 1,400-foot dead-end, but Sims is another perfect example of that dead-end, and it's right next door. So the precedence is already there, as a couple of people have brought up. So I don't mean to take too much time, but if that's going to be the situation, please understand that I would have to literally just reapply for a variance, and I then have to go through this entire process. Again, I've been going through this for a year and a half now, and I've done what the city has asked. Now I'm trying to do what the neighbors are asking. I think there's an alternative that takes into the city's recommendation and the neighbors' recommendation, and I would just ask the two to vote in favor of that if I amend the proposal and give it to you guys in two weeks' time.
Okay, point of order, Madam Mayor. Do I understand that we do not have the option of continuing this? That we must either approve or deny?
Mr. Dawkins?
Yeah, I can run you through the options you have. You know, this is subdivision approval, or subdivision application, so you have two options in the packet already. Approve it with the staff conditions as described, deny, and direct me to prepare findings. A third thing you could do, and it's already been discussed, is set it over for a variance hearing. To do that, I would recommend that you close this hearing but not act. In other words, close the hearing, continue it for action, to have to be two weeks at least, probably four, out so that you can publish the appropriate notice for a variance hearing, because it was not noticed tonight for a variance hearing, and that would have to take place. And it is you that can conduct that hearing, because that variance under the code would be a part of the subdivision application. But if you'd already acted on the subdivision application, it's no longer a part of it, variance would go to B.A., and you would want to hear it here. So door number three would be, close this hearing, set a variance hearing for whenever you can, two weeks, a month out, and continue for action on the subdivision until the same night as that variance hearing, then you'd vote on both. Door number four would be, as requested by the applicant, continue this subdivision entirely, continue the hearing. So the hearing remains open, applicant comes up with three great solutions that he memorializes in a revised plat. The hearing's already open effectively, and so you don't need to renotice. That's, information's made generally available to the neighborhood, and staff can look at it and render some thoughts. It goes in your packet for two weeks from now, or whenever you can get it together. And then you look at it, and you could, at that time, you can, you're back to approve or deny. So those are the four doors. Sorry, there's four, I'd like to be three.
So we can continue?
Yes, you can. But if you choose to continue so that you can have a subdivision redesign as opposed to just look at this variance question on the length of the cul-de-sac, then you're continuing the whole hearing. I think that would be fair, because of course, if there's some other design issues, the neighborhood's going to want to be able at that continued hearing to speak on it.
Right.
If it's just the variance, the neighborhood's spoken on the subdivision, you can sort of close that record. But the neighborhood's not heard about the variance necessarily, it's been discussed, but there's been no application. So when you get to that point, I can help you with a motion.
Does that work for you, then? That's...
Door number four? Is that four?
Meredith? Did you want it?
Well, what I would recommend is that, don't do two weeks, do a month, because we have the 15-day notice, seeing for the variance piece of it.
Okay.
And I don't think we could legally make two weeks.
Fair enough.
All right. So that would be the only thing different?
I think if they're going to continue just the subdivision hearing itself, Meredith, they could continue that to two weeks out because the hearing's already open. It's only if you go with door three, this, "Let's entertain a cul-de-sac-length variance", just because of the way the codes are in, we're going to need a month for that.
But we'd have to do that, though, in any case, right? We're going to have to do that.
Not necessarily. It depends upon what he comes back with as a proposal. It might be safe to continue it for a month so that if what he ends up deciding to come back with includes the subdivision or the cul-de-sac variance, then you're able to publish it. Yeah, probably so. That's safer, one month.
Mr. Matthews, did you want to ask a question?
Yes, I did. If I could ask a couple of quick questions for you, and I'd like just to get this on the table before we do one thing or the other also, but while you're there. This lot seven that's at the north end of Thirty-third East, what, that, well, it's gone now, but it looks like it's about 300 feet or something to the floodplain. What is, is there any plan for lot seven? The piece going north? It looks like you have about 400 or 500 feet of ownership north of Thirty-third, but the seventh lot, I was, thought I was told, there's nothing going to happen up there.
This lot right here?
Yes.
I've kept it so I could build a dream home. Uh, I've, I've kept it so I could build a dream home.
So, you could see the floodplain designation on that northern third. Some of it, he could do something with, the red stripy area, would allow no construction whatsoever. It's called Floodway.
Okay, but it looks like from the actual center line of Thirty-third Avenue up to the beginning of the floodplain, there's got to be at least three-hundred feet there.
So, so, at least the ver... It's still in plan. I don't know what I'm going to do with it, frankly.
Okay. I'm just, I'm, I'm looking for some alternatives, okay? And I would just...
And so...
And if that's your dream home, that's fine, I have no objection, I just...
I would like to... The way I have envisioned it is...
Well, I, I'm sorry, you can keep that to yourself.
Okay.
I was told there was nothing going to be built there, but if there's a plan for building there, I was just noting, there seems to be some space there, and so...
There's not enough space for a turnaround or a cul-de-sac.
No, but there would be for a home, and if you're already planning on that, that's fine.
That's the difference.
Because I was going to suggest maybe a, the whole lot number one home could be built there, and that would give more room for work coming off of Thirty-second.
This, this Thirty-second, that's a Route Street people have, can already attest to, you wind up with that grade differential that makes it just about impossible to reconcile throughout. Right now, it's relatively flat, but you make up for that flatness with a giant retaining wall right here along Thirty-second. So, we would just continue that retaining wall the whole way, provide the fire turnaround here, I would literally just take, in an amended application, Thirty-third, turn left, you drive down here to the same Hammerhead that we've already proposed, give this back to the Route Street side, maybe we could have big block parties here, and, and, and just leave it at that. We'd become seven more, uh, neighbors. I also, I have a, I have a four-year-old girl myself, so the idea of her running through, that's why I moved out of the Highlands into Wheat Ridge, is for the very things that Wheat Ridge offers as amenities. I'm still young with a lot of fight left, so I want to see some of these projects go through. I love Wheat Ridge, I want to see, I'll be here for a long time building a lot of stuff, and I, I love infill stuff, so this is, these are the types of complexities and challenges I like to solve, and I, I try to. And, and there is a contextual issue here that's been brought up, and, and the context has been brought up by me as an argument in the beginning, is grid patterns don't necessarily make sense in this application. Uh, I, I agree with that, but I also agree, there is an argument to be made by city that connectivity, fifty years from now, you may be sort of sorry that you didn't get the grid pattern when you had it. Uh, tho- those may be problems for another time.
I am getting ready to close this, and if there's no more questions of...
I move that we continue this meeting.
Well, we can close this, but not act.
Well, you can't close it.
What you need to figure out
Point of order.
is whether you're closing it, or, I mean, depending upon the door you're taking, you may not close the hearing, you may just continue the hearing.
Continue.
So I think we should see some motions, and then you'll know. I mean, if, if you close the hearing, you've closed the hearing and, and really continued, you can only continue it then for action.
Okay.
Is my point. If there's going to be more than, I think Councilmember Matthews wants to speak to that, and if you let the council discuss their options right now.
So I have a couple of questions for staff.
Okay. We have another question for staff?
I, I think, I think Councilmember Matthews is first.
Well, just, okay, I, I could, I'll yield for the question to staff, but I would like to come back with a point of order afterwards.
Alright, so you're yielding, you're yielding the floor, and you would like to ask staff a question?
Sure. Um, as it relates to the presentation prior to the public, uh, comment that was provided by the residents, uh, I had two questions. One is related to, um, why wasn't, uh, the Prospect Valley, uh, school, um, discussion brought up within that presentation, and that, um, that traffic influence in this, um, neighborhood, uh, brought up in that presentation? In my mind, that, that would seem to be a very, uh, strong influence in this, uh, in this thoroughfare, because it would, it would seem to me to be the, the strongest influence in the traffic pattern of this through-street, and the reason why this through-street would be going through. Uh, but in my notes here, and I'd have to go back and look at the tape, but, uh, it doesn't appear as though we, uh, went through any sort of major discussion about Prospect Valley, uh, at all in that presentation. So, uh, my concern is, we just, that was sort of either glossed over or not even discussed.
No, we, we did not include anything in the presentation about Prospect Valley. Um, again, the, the, the school traffic is something that happens in the morning, the afternoon, for a fairly brief period of time, the vast majority of the time. Um, this becomes just a through-street connecting some neighborhoods, and as one resident brought out, there's not going to be a lot of people on Thirty-second going up to this route, but certainly there is a chance, I, I don't deny that at all, that, that some fa- some parents that are wanting to go west from here might use this as a way to avoid the Quail Street intersection to come out onto, onto Thirty-second. That's possible. And from a staff point, standpoint, I understand where they're coming from, but from a staff point, standpoint, we don't think that's a bad thing. We think, the more, the more we can distribute traffic from these, these high-intense, um, if you will, very brief generators, the better off it is for everybody, you know? Yes, there will be more traffic on Route, but there'll be less traffic on Quail. So we think that's a benefit for Quail, maybe it's a downside for Route during that brief period of time when the school's opening up and shutting down, um, so, but that's, there wasn't anything in the presentation. The only thing in the original presentation, we didn't modify it much for this particular meeting.
But if we have a high-intensity, uh, traffic driver within a block of this subdivision, why would that not be in that presentation? Because, but for the residents' presentation, because of the way that these quasi-digital hearings are set up, council would not be presented with that information. And, a- as it relates to schools, it only takes one car going too fast for that to be a tragic accident. So that's my concern, is
Sure.
that, that it doesn't take but one, you know, car going too fast for that to be the issue.
And I guess my comment to that is, we have kids on every street in our town, we have a lot of connected streets, we have a lot of connected streets around a lot of our schools. And so, this isn't a, a one-off situation where we're suddenly making a situation of Route Street that doesn't exist everywhere else in Wheat Ridge around our schools. So from a traffic standpoint, we see this as a good thing, as a way to help distribute traffic. Um, during the, during the planning commission, we actually talked about people from Route Street, when church is in session, there's a lot of traffic back and forth across Thirty-second, they might use this as a way to get to Quail if they want to go east. Um, so from, again, from, from our standpoint as staff, we see connecting things as a good thing. It gives people options, it gives people all the ways to go. If there's something happening in one location, they can get out the other location. If we have an accident at Quail Street, then everyone in the school might decide to come out this way to, to get out on a Thirty-second, but it gives them the option to do that, instead of just being stuck at the school while waiting for the accident to clear. So again, that's our reason for the connectivity. It's not, we're not trying to harm property values, we're not trying anything that, we're trying to provide people options in all of these neighborhoods to have different ways to get in and out.
So, and then, my next question is, it relates to the statement that it's been, clearly been the city's intent to provide this street connection, but as it relates to the, the citizens' comments and their statements, that seems to be a direct con- uh, contradiction to tho- those statements and the, the statements that have been provided by the residents. So, m- my question to staff is, what evidence do we have that this has been the intent of the city, or the vision of the city, to make that connection, to, to make that through?
Well, in nineteen eighty-three, there was an exhibit in the staff report that showed that connection for Thirty-third going over to Quail Street.
And, uh, the citizens' comment was that that was a utility right away, not a, not a thoroughfare?
Well, it may have originally started that way, but when the staff report was prepared, when, when, as Meredith pointed out, the exhibit that's in your packet today shows that connection being made. When we as staff, I started here in two thousand and seven, so I was not involved in the original sort of Quail Hollow that was done in two thousand and seven. When the Quail Hollow that currently exists was processed, we saw the right-of-way connecting east from Route, and we said, "This is a great place to make a connection and provide a connection, and not have a lot of cul-de-sacs." I understand the, the desire of a lot of people to live on cul-de-sacs, but from a traffic standpoint, cul-de-sacs are a bad thing. I live on a very connected neighborhood, and I love it, and we've got kids all up and down the street, and to my knowledge, we've never had anybody killed there. So, um, it's a fourteen-hundred-foot-long street with, you know, twenty houses on, on both sides kind of thing, and, and people drive relatively slow, I've got a speed bump in front of my house, we've offered up, if this neighborhood's really worried about speeding traffic, this is a perfect candidate, either Thirty-third or Route Street, to do speed humps or some kind of traffic mitigation, and we can certainly do that. That's, that's certainly an option.
So, I, I would just say that, uh, it's sort of ironic that we are talking about cul-de-sacs, because an alternate definition of cul-de-sacs is a route or cor- a, a course leading to nowhere, because connecting, uh, this, uh, street through to Route Street seems to me to be a, a route to nowhere, in the sense that it doesn't serve, that Route Street doesn't serve the, uh, Quail Hollow, it doesn't serve this neighborhood to connect these streets. So, that, to me, I don't think, just based on the evidence that was provided by the citizens, uh, it doesn't show that there is that intent, and I would encourage staff to move away from making that connection and focus more on the alternative solutions that don't involve making that through connection, because that, that, to me, seems to be a more viable solution, because, uh, just based on the, the testimony provided by the residents and the history provided by, uh, the builders in this area are, are such that, uh, the, and the previous landowners, that, uh, there was never an intent by these landowners to have a through-street in this area, period. And, the, the suggestion that cul-de-sacs are bad, uh, with over twenty-three cul-de-sacs in the area, I, I don't see that that being the case, because that's the character of that area.
Okay.
Well...
Yeah, after planning commission, I thought, maybe I'm crazy. I found that exhibit, I had looked through the file from nineteen eighty-three, I got it back out today, and I looked at it again, and it, in the staff write-up, it kept calling the cul-de-sac bulb temporary. So clearly, there was maybe not an intent from the developer, and I do remember Gene Archer, so, um, but clearly staff was driving those, those internal connections. So, I'm not crazy, I don't think.
No one's saying no.
Mr. Matthews?
Okay, I guess I'm going to make a couple of comments first, just in that, A, I think we've, already tonight, we've come up with some several, some different options that are available to keep the majority of the neighborhood, um, satisfied. I mean, a, a pedestrian, I'm not worried about connect, the connectivity. I mean, to me, it's a little bit like we have a, a rule, or used to in the state, if you build something here, you can't move your stormwater off on your neighbor. Well, to open a street so a stormwater full of cars can come onto the neighbor's neighborhood, I'm not sure that's necessarily the way I'd like to see things happen either. And I'm not particularly concerned about our seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot rule, because so far, as well I can tell right now, it's just an arbitrary number. There's, we've been able to come up with no engineering standard that says anything over seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot is bad, and anything under that is good. And I don't think cul-de-sacs are bad. So I would, I'm reaching for a way here to keep the ne- allow the neighborhoods that exist to keep their character, and allow the developer to develop this piece of property in as sane a manner as necessary, and I think we have to come up with, whether it be a bicycle, or a pedestrian access at the end, or whatever, but I see no reason why we have to make, why it's just imperative that Thirty-third has to run through to anywhere. So, my original point of order was, I would like to make sure that however we state that, that it gives the maximum flexibility to the developer to work out some of these different scenarios that have been discussed tonight that I'm aware of, and I, I'm assuming two weeks or four weeks, you would prefer to keep your options as open as possible. And that was just my question for point of order, is I got confused, a little confused there on the four options, but I would caution us and really encourage us to do the maximum number of, whatever it takes, to give the maximum number of options to find a variance here, and not be stuck with some arbitrary numbers.
Door number four does that, because door number four was to continue this hearing, do not close it for testimony, continue this hearing to, uh, four weeks from now. Uh, within that time, the applicant can choose to just redesign, and it's a redesigned subdivision, don't need a variance, redesign plus a variance, or don't redesign, do a variance, but it gives him all of those, those choices. You can work with staff, if it looks like you want to trigger a variance hearing for that same night, a month out, you've got plenty of time to get the notices out for that.
That would be July twenty-fourth.
I would then ask Mr. Fitzgerald to, to make that motion, that we continue this hearing, hearing with that option of variances that were needed, that flexibility.
Okay. Uh, I move we continue this hearing until four weeks from now.
July twenty-fourth at seven o'clock PM.
Right. With the provision that if, uh, necessary, we may also can, uh, conduct a, um... Yeah, hearing on a variance for the length of the cul-de-sac.
That's fine, I mean, the applicant may, without you saying so, the applicant has the right to apply for a variance on the cul-de-sac, and if they choose to make that application sometime in the next four weeks, staff will go ahead and publish and post, and it's good the applicant knows that, uh, but it, it doesn't have to be a part of the motion to allow them that option.
That works for you.
Segmented by Mr. Matthews?
That works for you, right?
Is there s...
Yeah.
I, I would love the opportunity to, with, with all of the feedback from the neighborhood and the feedback, to extend, you know, to give us a chance to try this, and see if it can meet these regulations with minimal variance as possible. Uh, the, the variance, I think, that would come up is, you know, the, the length of the cul-de-sac length. So if, if this motion is what does, I, I'm not, I'm sort of ignorant when it comes to this stuff, so I apologize if... But yeah, that's a, I, I think that would be great. That way I could talk to the, the neighbors one more time, I could talk to the staff, and we could sort of put our heads together in a way that can solve both of these challenges.
Sounds like everybody wants to make it work. Right, we're all, we're all going the same way.
We have a first, uh, we have a second, so I, I don't know if we have more discussion, or we can just go to the vote. You're voting on continuing this hearing?
To July the twenty-fourth at seven o'clock PM.
July twenty-fourth, so that, uh...
Well, that's the motion.
...variety of, of oper- of systems can be brought forward, okay? I believe, did you...
So, so alternatives will be brought to us by the developer, and you're going to communicate and reach out to the, to the citizens in the neighborhood?
I'll reach out to the neighborhood and
Okay.
staff.
Okay.
With our alternatives.
Okay, great, thank you.
The variance will be posted, right?
Well, if, if they apply for it, you know, we keep trying to fashion what will happen in the next four weeks, what you really need to do is give them the four weeks and let them fashion it, I think.
Do I need to file additional paperwork?
Well, perhaps, but it's not, the council's debating a motion right now, and, and that you'll need to take up with the staff.
As it relates to alternatives, one of the alternatives we want to clarify is that an alternative that, that at least I'm not interested in seeing is a connection to Route Street.
From Thirty-third?
That, uh, that, as you're looking at, uh, connections and, and options and alternatives, is that the Route Street cul-de-sac remain a cul-de-sac, and that it be not connected to, uh, this development.
I, I think that's why we're, we're doing...
Well, I just, I, I want to make sure that that's crystal clear.
Right, just make it clear.
That's why we're turning the, basically, continuing this.
So, as I'm, as I'm sort of playing this forward in my mind, with the drainage that's on the east side of this lot, um, the design today has that drainage overflowing Thirty-third to continue north, and the reason that was okay was because we had the connection to the west. So from a, from a, if, as we, as we, if we don't make this through-street connection, the way the lots are laid out today with that drainage on the east side of the lot, that actually the best location to probably connect is to the west of Route Street, not to Quail Hollow. Does that, does that make sense, what I'm, what I'm saying?
Yes, it does. So you think it might be wise to keep that option open?
I don't know where we'll land, we can talk to the engineer, we can set up scenarios, we can meet, and we can talk about these things, but, but I think precluding saying that this, if this subdivision has to connect to Thirty-third Avenue to the east, maybe sets up a situation that, from a drainage standpoint, might be more difficult to deal with than, than the connection to Route Street. And I, and at the planning commission meeting, the, the Route Street neighborhood all said they were okay with the subdivision, they were okay with the subdivision actually connecting to Route, I'm not going to speak for them, but that was what I remembered, um, but they didn't want the through-street connection. I think the issue is the through-street connection. I don't think they're opposed to it.
Mark, I, I think, I think the point that Mark's making is that we can't make those decisions tonight.
Right.
Give us the time to sit down with the developer and staff, and, and we take all the neighborhood's concerns into, into place.
Basically, we, we can't put any rules on...
And we understand there's a lot of concerns about connecting to Route, so we'll take that into consideration, um, and, and hopefully we can find a solution where that, that doesn't have to happen. So, um, obviously, obviously if it comes back as Route's the only option, you guys can have a decision to vote it down or up at that point.
Right. Is that... Is, is that clear? What he's saying is that it might be Route Street connection.
It's very clear, Mr.-
Could be Quail Street.
Very clear that Route is not a preferred option, so.
It's not the preferred option, but we have to leave that door open in case, planning-wise, we, you know, engineering-wise, it can't be done.
Yeah, that was just my intent, was that they have the maximum number of options.
Yes.
If you have to file for three different variances, do so. We can sort through the pick of the litter, but give everybody the maximum amount of compromise and win-win as possible.
Are we ready to vote? Please cast your votes.
Vote carries six to zero. Vote carries.
Thank you. I want to thank all of you for being very patient, quiet, understanding, and very nice crowd to work with. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for being here.
And we all, we all want the best to happen for y'all. Okay, let's move on. Item three, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to dig this out here. Do y'all need a break, or?
I'm okay.
I'm good. We won't hit, this'll go fast now.
Hopefully, okay.
Right.
Judging by the-
Unless you're a problem.
I'll save it. Have a good month.
Yeah, let's take a break, 'cause this noise is gonna go on for a while.
Thanks, Meredith.
... agreement on first reading, order it published, public hearing set from Monday, July 10th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in city council chambers and that it take effect upon adoption at second reading. Second? Seconded by Ms. Duran, please cast your votes.
Motion carries five to one with one vote no. Abstain, I'm sorry, with Fitzgerald abstaining.
I would like to explain I'm abstaining because I was not at the study session.
Well, I would tell you that abstention really only available where it was say a quasi judicial matter and you hadn't been at the hearing is one, or where you would have a conflict of interest, a financial conflict of interest. Here, it's my advice that you should vote. The materials in the packet are sufficient to permit you to have an opinion and I would urge that you exercise your vote.
I guess we're going to revote.
Revote. Motion carries six to zero.
Item four, which is also first reading, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Bill Number 13-2017, ordinance approving a lease with Verizon Wireless for the placement of cellular antenna facility on the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center. At issue, the council is asking for approval of a lease with Verizon Wireless for placement of a cellular antenna facility on the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center. The Parks and Recreation Department has been negotiating with Verizon for several months. The term is five years with three options to extend for five years each. The annual rental payment is $25,000. For the first year with increasing by 2% each following year, the antenna facility will be fully contained on the roof of the building as shown in the attached photo simulations. There'll be an accessory concrete equipment pad at the rear west side of the building. Location diagram and photo simulation are attached.
Thank you, please give us a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 13-2017, an ordinance approving a lease with Verizon Wireless for the placement of a cellular antenna facility on the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center for first reading, order it published, public hearing set from Monday, July 10th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers and that it take effect upon adoption.
Second? Seconded by Mr. Duran, please cast your votes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you, item five, Mr. Matthews.
Item five is Council Bill Number 14-2017, an ordinance amending sections 16-81 and 16-84 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to legalize gravity knives and switchblades consistent with state law. That issue is as follows. Through the adoption of Senate Bill 17-008 during the last legislative session, the Colorado Legislature amended state statutes to remove gravity knives and switchblades from the list of weapons that it is unlawful to possess under state law. This amendment goes into effect on August 9th of 2017. The Wheat Ridge Police Department recommends amending sections 16-81 and 16-84 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to legalize gravity knives and switchblades in order to be consistent with state law.
Thank you, this is first reading, once again, please give us a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill 14-2017, an ordinance to amend sections 16-81 and 16-84 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to legalize gravity knives and switchblades consistent with state law on first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, July 10th at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to just provide the definitions of those two for the general public, if that's okay.
Why don't you wait to second reading?
If that's all right, I'll do that at the second reading.
It just seems more appropriate so that we-
Thank you.
-move on tonight. Yes, a second. Okay, that concludes our business meeting. Sorry?
Vote on it, vote on the motion.
Go ahead, please vote. Cast your votes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Now, that concludes the business meeting, let's move on to City Manager's hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. We'd like to give you a quick update on our roofing permit process that has, from the May 8th hailstorm, and Ken and our City Treasurer would also like to provide a little bit of an update while we're at it. Mr. DiTullio did pass out our bi-weekly report that shows the number of permits that we've been processing and the revenues that are being generated and we're going to start tracking the additional costs. We don't have it quite yet on this form, but we'll have those on the next report. But roofing permits, applications are still continuing to be submitted in very significant numbers, although that we're processing these permits in record, and issuing permits in record numbers as you can see from the handout. We still need to do a better job of ensuring that we can issue permits in time and fashion. We're continuing to step up both with building permit technicians and building inspectors. We have a contract firm, Charles Abbott, they continue to provide additional resources as they can. They have a limit also on how many staff they could provide. I've personally reached out over the last couple of weeks to the cities of Westminster, Golden, Lakewood, and Arvada to see if they had staff that they could provide, but unfortunately they're just as busy as we are from the hailstorm and just the general economy. There's a lot of construction going on in the metro area. We've also reached out to the Department of Local Affairs who help in these situations and the Colorado Chapter of the International Code Council requesting additional resources. Again, they are going to reach out to their membership to see if they can provide additional resources, but their initial response at this point was that building officials along the front range, all the way down to Pueblo, are experiencing high demand in this area too, so they're also short on staff. So we're reaching out to many different partners and agencies to see if we can continue beefing up our staffing and Ken can give a little bit more update on that. And, well, yeah, I'll just turn it over to Jared, you want to go first?
Sure. So I'd like to refer council to their roofing permits and inspections, the June 26th bi-weekly report. I had asked staff to generate this every two weeks for us. And first of all, I wanted to refer to the back where it has roofing permits and inspections, online applications submitted. So as you can see, since June 7th, we've received 1,464 applications online. That number isn't correlated to anything else on the front page because some have been processed and some haven't been. So this 1,464 is the total number of applications submitted online for roofs. So if anybody has any questions on that before I flip it over?
Nope.
So then, if you go back to the front page, RRF stands for residential roof. And if you look at the column where it says permits processed, if you go on down to 2017 year-to-date, that 2017 isn't a typo, actually, since the beginning of January, the city has processed 2017 permits, all permits. That's roofs, everything else that's definitely been submitted to the city. Of that, the RRF permits processed, or residential roof, 1,465 so far. And then if you go across all the way to the very right where it says RRF permit total, so far, the city has collected, this is unanticipated revenue for the city, $620,657.26. And I had mentioned before that we were going to track the labor costs. Well, if you go on down to the contract labor costs, estimated costs, as you can see, we didn't have any contract permit technicians until June 5th, and Mr. Johnson will discuss this further, and they bill every 30 days. So we haven't even possibly received a bill yet because it's every 30 days that we're going to be getting a bill from the company, the contract company. So based on the $620,000, $620,000 that's been raised, plus Patrick had, is freezing some projects, that will allow me to pay the Fruitdale $310,000 bill to sign off on that, and that'll be able to maintain our reserve at 17%. Patrick, can we talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, as Mr. DiTullio noted, we looked at this year's budget, had staff look at this year's budget with the closure of our Walmart, July 7th, I thought it's prudent to look at some expenditures that we could potentially freeze for this year. And we've identified just under half a million miscellaneous items, a lot of it's staffing salary savings, I think there's a couple, about $129,000 are staffing salary savings. So most of the things we're looking at freezing are not going to have an impact on our citizens, but they're just some budget numbers that we can put on hold. So with that, plus the additional revenues that we're seeing from these building permits and use tax, we're able to pay the June invoice for the Fruitdale project and we'll have an estimated reserve of 17.7%. So we should have, after this payment, we have, I think, just about another half million, $500,000 to pay on that project. So we should, hopefully with additional revenues still coming in, we should be able to make hopefully the July, or the $500,000 payments in the next couple of months, so.
So the additional permitting fees will offset the losses that we have from using, losing Walmart?
Eventually, yes. Also that, it's enabling us to pay our contract services, but it's also allowing us to keep our reserve up to a certain level and pay the Fruitdales. So we're looking at this on every two weeks and almost a monthly basis to make sure that we're maintaining that threshold. There's going to be other adjustments when we start losing revenue from Walmart, we haven't yet, we'll still get payments through 1st of August through Walmart, so.
At this point, we don't have any figures yet on what the contract labor is going to-
Correct.
Okay, so that has to be taken into consideration as well.
Yes.
And so, one of the points that was made, I think by Councilmember Urban and staff members, is that right now, we've, for residential roof permits, we've done for 2017, 1,465, but we know there's between 12,000 and 14,000 rooftops in the city, so this could potentially reflect a 10% of the city being done so far. And that would mean that if you extrapolate that out, that could potentially be revenue of $6 million in revenue in permits. And that brings up a point that Mr. Matthews asked about, he wanted to know why in 2017 we actually had more permits processed so far than 2016, but why was the all permits total revenue less? All the permits are calculated based on the size of the project and the value. So right now, it's less because there are residential roof permits and it's a smaller dollar amount per permit. But at the end of the day, if we, if 1,465 is 10% of the total revenue and roofs done in the city, that could be, you know, tore upwards of $6 million potentially, but we don't know that. So I'm just looking ahead and using empirical evidence. And then Mr. Johnson wanted to discuss maybe the labor costs and the report in that area too.
Well, that's why we're watching it. Mr. Matthews, you had a question?
Yeah, we've talked here about contract, but I was just going to ask if we're tracking overtime costs and our inspectors and all this, are they exempt, are they hourly, or if we're incurring overtime and/or comp time or what have you, are we tracking those and making sure they get addressed as an offset to the revenue?
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, we're tracking those as well. We, you know, we'll be in front of council with the budget supplemental request sometime soon. We're just trying to get kind of a stabilized model here so that we're feeling better about what those numbers are going to be towards, you know, to make it kind of through year-end or as close as possible to make that estimate. And we've been working on our 2018 budget as well with Patrick and Heather, so those processes are working together. You know, in terms of the total number of permits, it's so hard to tell. I mean, Mr. DiTullio is certainly right, we have some people saying, you know, nearly every roof was affected, but, you know, we'll have to see whether that really is the case. So we're, all we've got is kind of anecdotal evidence in that regard, but a typical roof permit generates, a building permit, use tax and fee of about $400, $420 on average. So that's the kind of delta that we're dealing with. So, you know, on a daily basis, we're issuing between 75 and 100 permits. So at, you know, that's between, you know, $30,000 and $40,000, say, on a daily basis, at least for now, that will eventually slow down. We have looked back at the 2009 storm just for parallels and, you know, that first month after the storm was busy, the second month was busier, the third month was busier, the fourth month was less busy, and we'll see. I mean, will it follow that same cycle, maybe, maybe not. The timing of that storm was a little different too, it came later in the year, so winter hit us in terms of the ability to stop doing roofs, really ceases in kind of the November timeframe, just the temperature isn't conducive to getting a good roof installation. But we, so the math for the, well, just to kind of talk about our model that we're trying to refine and continue to refine, Patrick alluded to the fact that, you know, we're not sure we're totally there yet in terms of what we think is a proper customer service level. We're continuing to do next-day inspections. I've said it before, I'm sure, at 130 permits or inspections a day at some days, I'm sure, you know, mistakes will be made, some things will be missed, but at a policy level, we're continuing to meet our expectation of next-day inspections and I don't think we've had very few complaints at all on that regard. As we've said before, we're very flexible on that mid-roof requirement in terms of allowing the contractors to be anywhere between 25% and 75% complete. That gives us the ability to look at what we need to do, also gives them the ability to hopefully close out the job in one day or largely close it out in one day to move on to another project. In terms of the resources, you know, council will recall that initially we ceased our online application process for building permits for just the reason that we're realizing is true, which is we felt like we'd have no ability to keep up with that volume of permit application and without additional resources. And we're working on that, we've made some progress, we have a little more progress to make, but you'll see that we got, you know, on our first full day of having that online application process onboard, we got 225 applications, right? It ebbs and flows between them, but we were certainly right that they can submit applications much more quickly than we can process them without a lot more resources. We've gotten some of those resources, we probably need some more. So we have two kind of back-of-house permit techs through Charles Abbott Associates. They were up there working when I came down here to work, trying to get that backlog reduced. We had initially thought, and it was a guess, right, that we were going to quote three to five business days to turn around those online permit applications. We frankly quickly fell behind, in part because we had to kind of figure out that whole system and make sure we were kind of resourcing it properly in terms of what we were doing, different administrative tasks, and who was responsible for what and what the hours were. We had no-shows come in where we, you know, thought we were going to issue 75 permits, but only 60 permit people showed up. So we're overbooking in the spirit of the airlines now, and hopefully that gets us to that sweet spot. So we're still refining all those kind of procedures and protocols to try and get into a groove. The two back-of-house permit techs really just process those online permits, and it should be, we only have one now, we think we need two to get through that backlog, but, and then we've got two people at the front of house. And frankly, our city staff permit tech, which we have one of right now, really, we really need to get that individual focus just on the day-to-day work and probably largely get them out of the roof permit protocols and really have Charles Abbott be our full resource for that. So we requested an additional permit tech, I got word from Charles Abbott that that person likely won't be able to start until July 5th, so, which is why they're working overtime tonight to help until that person gets involved. Commissioner, or Councilmember Matthews mentioned the overtime. We certainly are having some overtime, and, but I'm really sensitive to not burning out my team as well, so we kind of want to get to a model where we don't have to have consistently overtime for six months and really start to affect people's quality of life and work-life balance. So we're trying to rely on Charles Abbott, but that's challenging. I mean, they're bringing in people from Georgia, from California, which is where their bigger offices are. They are a firm that's growing their Colorado presence, so they're fully committed to supporting us and they're bringing in resources from afar, but it's a balancing act with them as well because they're pulling, it's busy in California and it's busy in Georgia too, so they're pulling those people away from other job sites where they were, you know, engaged as well. So we're currently using five contract inspectors a day in addition to our one-city staff inspector. That equates to, with the two permit techs and the five inspectors, to about $5,000 a day. So to go back to the math from earlier, you know, if we're issuing $30,000 worth of permits, we're certainly covering that delta, and if we need, you know, more resources, we're prepared to do that. Charles Abbott is actually going to kind of create a bench of inspectors, so they're sensitive to the fact that they're uprooting people from their lives in other states to meet this storm crisis need, and they want to have a bench so that they can cycle people in for, you know, three weeks and maybe give them a week back in California with their family and working at a California job. So they're managing that well, I think, and getting their arms around that. So we're getting there, we're not quite there yet in terms of having the, kind of what we think is kind of the process and procedures and resources that we can march forward for the next four months, but we're real, we feel like we're getting real close. We've got a backlog, earlier today, the backlog was about 685 permits that had been submitted online but hadn't been yet reviewed and approved. That went up today, another busy day of the online permits, it went up to about 845 again, which is why they were working some overtime tonight to try and reduce that. Our goal, because we had initially quoted that three to five days and we quickly went over that, as many as, I think about eight to 10 business days, we got it back down to seven today in terms of the turnaround time. Our goal is, based on this work this evening, is to get it down to six hopefully tomorrow, and I think the ultimate goal is to, you know, hopefully be able to achieve that five, but it's all just a reflection of what the volume is, right? So we can't control that, it ebbs and flows, and again, when we get that additional permit tech from Charles Abbott here on July 5th, we hope that goes a long ways towards getting rid of that backlog and getting a more reasonable turnaround time for processing those online permits.
And the inspectors are able to keep up once-
They are. The inspectors, we've gotten them back to, they're not working as much overtime, and they're getting their jobs done. One of the challenges that we had initially was that they had so many inspections out there that when they got back in the office, it was, you know, they'd already worked nine hours and they had 25, 30, 40 inspection results to enter into the system so that we know whether they passed a mid-roof, so if they were requesting a roof final, we could get that logged as well. So we're trying to get that sweet spot so that they can get their full duties done, not just their field duties, but also their office duties, and we're, I think that five, for now, feels like it's the right number of inspectors to be able to do that.
Madam Mayor, do we have any idea about the number of permits issued per property, whether a property is required to have multiple permits with respect to decking and the roofing or with respect to the siding, the decking and the roofing, or as it relates to how many permits are being issued per property or whether it's a one permit per property or how that looks?
Yeah, the roof decking is part of the same permit.
Okay.
And sometimes that comes up at, during the construction, right? Because you deconstruct and get your shingles off and you find out whether your sheathing's any good. So we allow those folks to come in unscheduled to amend that roof permit and say, okay, it's going to have decking. Changes the valuation and obviously changes what we're going to look at in terms of nailing patterns and spacing on the deck, on the sheathing. If it's exterior cladding or siding, that would require a separate permit. And I don't know the volume that we've been experiencing for those, I could certainly look into that. I mean, I know, obviously, we're having some of those. I don't think it's nearly as many as it was back in 2009 just because of the nature of that storm being associated with a lot of wind created a lot of damage to exterior siding.
And as it relates to the inspections, when the inspectors are doing that mid-roof inspecting, are they going up on the ladder, up on the roof when they're doing those inspections?
Yes.
Okay. And the, as it relates to the hours of the billing department, I've heard from both residents and contractors that there's limited hours that they're able to access the billing department. Is there a way to extend those hours to allow better access to the general public to either receive permits or some way to extend those hours to allow either to be able to pick up a permit or otherwise access the billing department so that they can pick up a permit with, you know, a reasonable timeframe as opposed to a shortened time period within the day?
Well, let me describe to you what our model is right now. We're issuing, we open at 7:00, in terms of when the staff comes in, their hours for the building division staff are 7:00 to 4:00. They, for the first half hour, they work on administrative tasks like getting the books in order for the day, pulling off all the inspection requests and getting those scheduled. So we open for permit issuance at 7:30, and at the back end, we close at 3:30. We've certainly been closing a lot later than that typically, but again, the goal is to kind of get back into a sustainable model at some point in the future. From 7:30 to 10:30, we're open to the general public, still the same system where people are pulling the ticket to get kind of in a queue, but we're open for all types of other-than-roof permits. So it's just a come as you are, get in line, get here sooner, you get a quicker number, you're getting quicker. So that's how we're spending from 7:30 to 10:30. From 10:30, got to get all these numbers right for sure, but we have three windows between 10:30 and 3:30, or maybe it's three, maybe Patrick's pulling it up here for me.
I guess if we can't get it straight, how's a roofer going to get it straight?
Well, we do have it straight.
No, 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 I get that, but it's my concern is a roofer is-
So a roofer, when they get their permit, they're going to be given one of three windows, right? There's a window from 10:30 to 12:00.
Eleven to 12:30.
Eleven to 12:30.
12:30 to 2:00 or 2:00 to 3:30.
So there's three windows, so they have an hour and a half window to pull their permits. And when they, when they get notice via email for their online permit, they receive that notice of that window, so a date and a time. And then when they come in, same thing, they pull a ticket, they get in the queue, but they're in that queue for that hour and a half. I mean, the whole reason we went to the hour and a half, or to the online process again is that we, you know, we found it unacceptable too that when we realized people were queuing up at 6:00 AM in the morning and still maybe not getting a permit, right, that day, that was just not acceptable as a customer service model. So the wait is significantly reduced, right? They come in for an hour and a half window, and presumably if they get in at the front end of that window, they're going to get in at the front end of that hour and a half.
And I guess from my perspective, it seems like, and I appreciate that we're concerned about the quality of life and the work-life balance of the employees, but we're also concerned about the quality of life and the work-life balance of the residents and making sure that they have a good quality of life while the roof materials sitting waiting on their roofs and whatnot and making sure that this is done in a timely manner. I've gotten a lot of calls from residents waiting on these permits and wondering when this is going to be done, and so I want to make sure that we are, and I see a lot of progress being made, but I can only see this getting worse over time as we've indicated that the number of permit, the backlog is only growing over time, and I just want to make sure that we continue to throw as much resources as we can at this and understand that the quality of life and the work-life balance of staff is going to suck for the time being. It's just, that's just the way of this storm is going to be, and that's just the nature of the situation, and I'm sorry that that's the way it is, but that's the nature of the situation, and we will do everything we can to support the staff through this, and that's what overtime pay is designed for, but that's what we want to make sure that we sort of understand that we are here for the residents, not for the staff. That's what we want to make sure that we have that right perspective, and that's what I want to get through, that we have that understanding that as much as we appreciate everything that the staff is doing, and they're doing a great job under tremendous pressure and they're cranking these out at record speed, that we also understand that the number of residents looking for permits is only going to grow as we get towards the end of summer because, as I talked about, contractors and residents, majority of people are still waiting on pulling a permit. Majority of people haven't even considered getting the roof done yet, so the worst is yet to come on this, and I'd still like to see changes to that mid-roof inspection process either through an affidavit or otherwise, and I'd like council to consider that, and I just, I think we need to, as much as- I think we need to, as much as we don't have additional resources or staff to throw at this, then the next step is to consider what can we do to streamline the process. And I brought that up before, but I haven't gotten much support on that. So I want to see what we can do to streamline this because this is only going to get worse with time.
Your honor, city managers' matters.
I'm done. That's it. See.
Nothing, thanks.
City attorney, coming. President.
So just to reiterate, this report will be generated every two weeks. I'm assuming by next two weeks, we'll have some labor costs in here. This will be posted on the city's website. And I think that what I'd like to see all of our elected officials do when you're talking to your constituents is use these financial reports, this information as backup, because I see a lot of misinformation on social media and other places where people are saying it's taking a month to get a permit. And, I mean, it's always the city's fault. And I'm not necessarily sure that all contractors are organized enough to get themselves in the queue. And, you know, if they schedule themselves right, they can get their midroof inspection the same day they're doing the roof. And they can just, so I think that it's beholding on everybody, elected officials and staff and the contractors and the residents to make sure that they're organized as much as they can when they're trying to get their property fixed. Because it's not all the city's fault on a lot of these things, especially when someone says it's taking a month to get a permit. And, you know, then that just perpetuates itself and exacerbates itself. And they had six months. And like we've mentioned, this is probably going to be a year process, that people will be pulling permits for their roofs next spring, next summer. If they wait, if they don't have leaks, they'll probably wait for a while because they don't want to pay two deductibles. That was one of the comments on social media, was they don't want to pull a permit now because they don't want to have another storm come in, and then they're paying two deductibles on their roof. So, and the final thing I was going to ask, does anybody have any questions or comments on this before it goes live tomorrow on the website? Any, if you have any changes or don't understand any of the information, please let myself know or Mr. Goff or Mr. Johnston, and we can tweak it for every two weeks. Any questions or comments on this?
I really do want to thank staff for the work they've done in this, plus keeping us very informed as to what's going on. It helps us all as elected officials to talk to our constituents and explain things. We've all received some calls and had opportunity to give them some information, which is really appreciated by our citizens. Elected officials' managers, let's go down our councilmembers. Mr. Ann?
I'll try to make this short, Janice. I have partnered with West 29th Marketplace. We're doing a book drive, and that includes Wheat Ridge Poultry, Twisted Smoothie, and the Style Nail Salon. And it's going to be from July 1 through July 31. And you can, let's see here, if you take three books in to Wheat Ridge Poultry and you make a purchase that day, you'll get 10% off your purchase. Also the same with Twisted Smoothie. If you donate three books, you'll get 10% off your purchase for that day. If you have any questions, you can contact me through my city email or my number, 720-312-0583. And all these books are going to be donated to Reach Out and Read Colorado. Thank you.
Mrs. Hoppe, Mrs. Hoppe.
None tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you. I just would like to take a moment to recognize the facility coordinator, Brian Blazer, with the Wheat Ridge Rec Center for his heroic actions and his attentive nature to the medical needs of a patron at the rec center on Friday morning. Without getting into the details of the incident, his quick action and his ability to handle a very tragic situation was well-recognized by the patrons of the rec center. And I would like to see the council in some way, shape, or form do some sort of recognition or otherwise commend him for his actions and his ability to be able to handle that situation with great leadership and the ability to deal with that situation as tragic as it was. And at the same time, thank the rest of the team at the rec center for dealing with that situation and handling it with grace. And it was obviously, but more than that, being able to show back up on Monday morning and be able to handle everything just as it was, because that takes just as much courage as anything. So to Brian Blazer, I know that you are a great city employee, and I just appreciate everything you do for the rec center and all the patrons that come in there every day. So thank you to you and really appreciate all of your efforts. Want to also thank Breckenridge Brewery and the St. Peter and Paul Community. Thanks to their efforts, we collected over 2,000 diapers over the weekend for the inaugural Pints for Pampers event. And that was to benefit the Jefferson County Human Services, which is currently out of diapers. So if you have any extra diapers, feel free to donate them to the Jefferson County Human Services. And then, as it relates to the green belt, I sent an email to the West Metro Fire District asking what we can do to educate residents who live along the ridge and along the green belt to educate them about the, what it means to live in an urban wildlife, urban wildland interface and understanding the need to clear brush away from your property and making sure that we understand the need to protect your home from wildfires. So that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Thank you for appreciating those staff. I will talk to Joyce Manderay and see if there's something we can do to recognize those staff in front of council.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
I have really nothing but just talking about the urban wildlife. I saw a deer cross 32nd Avenue the other day.
Actually, there was one, it was at the concert. There was a deer, concert in the park, which is, those are wonderful if you're not attending those. Mr. Matthews?
Not tonight, thank you.
No. The city clerk, I forgot to ask you. Got nothing, no. Okay. I did attend the Wheat Ridge Senior Resource Center Gala fundraiser, which was a wonderful fundraiser for the seniors, Senior Resource Center, as well as the celebration of John Sabau's retirement after over 30 years of service. I can't remember, it was 33, 35. He kind of cried. It was just very, very tender. Lovely, lovely, lovely thing to do. I believe that's it, folks, and wish you all good night.